Welcome to our October 12, 2009 work session. Work sessions are a more informal setting to update the council on business items. No votes will be taken. There are five items on the agenda tonight. Item number three, discussion and presentation of transportation management system along Highway 9 has been removed. Public comment is allowed that is germane to an agenda item. If you wish to speak, you're required to fill out a public comment card, submit it to the city clerics staff. Public comment will be allowed for a total of 10 minutes per agenda item and no more than two minutes per person. Public comment will be heard at the beginning of each item. Once the item is called, no other public cards or comment cards will be accepted. And also, tonight, I'd like to allow Councilmember Deversa to introduce a special guest that's here watching us tonight.
Katie, you want to stand up and come out here? This is Katie Stokes. She's running for class president in the third grade at Cogburn Woods Elementary, and she wanted to come and see how we run our meetings. And her teacher, from what her mom, Mrs. Stokes, Ms. Vicki Stokes here, told me, her teacher started down the path of talking about municipal government and elections, et cetera. And Katie said, "Oh, well, we could go over to the City of Milton's, the city hall, and watch one of their meetings." And so her teacher said, "Well, if you do that, I'll give you extra credit." So she's here tonight and came to meet the mayor. So good luck with your campaign, Katie.
Thanks, Katie. Let us know.
Thanks for bringing her, Mom.
Do we have any public comment?
No general public comments, sir.
Please sound the first agenda item.
Discussion on the historic preservation ordinance. Mr. Tom Wilson. Robin McDonald.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Tonight, I'm going to give you an update on what has occurred since you deferred this item at your 21st of September meeting. The Planning Commission, basically what you did was to recommend deferral, and with that deferral, it was to go to the Planning Commission for further review and recommendations. The Planning Commission met at their regularly scheduled meeting on September 22. After deliberating on the ordinance along with four of the members of Historic Preservation Committee, the Planning Commission wanted to call a special-called meeting the following Monday to review, to finish the review of the document. The second meeting occurred a week later, again with the presence of the four Historic Preservation Committee members. The document before you that was passed out has the recommendations of the Planning Commission shown in red, as well as some questions for staff and for the city attorney's office. I will go over the questions posed by the Planning Commission in a minute. The city attorney's office has had an opportunity to review the proposed changes recommended by the Planning Commission. And this item will come back to you next week at your regular meeting on the October 19th, on October 19th, for a vote. And again, it'll be in your package, it's the same document, along with a staff memo. Basically, after the many hours of deliberation and very good deliberation of the Planning Commission in conjunction with members of the Historic Preservation Committee, the major change to the ordinance, as you see it, is the deletion of the prior use recognition clause. Otherwise, many of the edits are ensuring that the document is consistent with the state ordinance, as well as tailoring the ordinance to the City of Milton and its specific needs. So let me just go through really quickly, I won't bore you with everything, with some of the issues or questions that the Planning Commission had for staff. There was, staff, Planning Commission asked us to look at the state law, starting on page 11, 4 through 8. And basically, these are the processes required by the state for adopting an ordinance for designation of historic districts and historic properties. Staff did realize that the state law requires at least three notices to be put into the newspaper prior to the hearing. So that will be corrected. So that was the only major issue that was different that I saw from the state ordinance. Also, there was a question on page 13 toward the bottom. It's in orange or peach, where it says, "The HPC shall issue certificates of appropriateness for the above-proposed actions if those actions conform to an in-design-scale building material setback in site features into the United States Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation and Guidelines for Rehabilitating Historic Buildings." So basically, this document is a document that's obviously published by the U.S. Department of Interior. It's about 185 pages. I printed it out. And there's two different, there's guidelines and there's standards. And basically, it's exactly what it says. One of them are standards, and it doesn't appear that we have to use them, but I would think it would behoove the city to, you know, the wheel's already been invented. And also, if there's any structures that would be of enough historic significance to be a national landmark, that for any tax abatements, they would have to follow those standards. And then the guidelines, again, are just guidelines, and they are not required by law. So I was just making that clear there. There were some questions on page 17 about the fines penalty provisions, section 7. Basically, Article 29-2 addresses all violations to the zoning ordinance, and I believe that the maximum fine is $1,000 per violation. And usually, that's set by the municipal judge as well. It doesn't have to be $1,000, but up to $1,000. So the Planning Commission felt like that this wasn't a very, it didn't have a lot of teeth to it as far as the fines, if there were issues with not keeping historic properties up to code, or, and let's hope not, a demolition of a historic property. So I've done some, well, I haven't, but actually Travis has done some research on other jurisdictions and what types of fines and penalties were given to put forth for other jurisdictions. So I have that as well. So basically, that is, there's a couple other legal questions, and if you would like to know the answers to that, Ken would be able to speak to those. So right now, that's the update on what's occurred thus far on the ordinance. And I know the Planning Commission has worked really hard in conjunction with Historic Preservation Committee. I think it's really helped it to become an even better document with their thoroughness. So if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Well, Ms. McDonald's up there. Do we have any questions from council? Do we have any public comment on this item? Okay. No other questions? Julie?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Robin, can you maybe just speak a little bit to the makeup of the committee? I know we had had some discussions at our last work session in terms of different options. Obviously, one option being to have the Historic Preservation Committee, and then there had been some discussion about integrating the Design Review Board and/or having some of those. And I, just looking at this language, it looks like some of those things have been suggested. Can you speak to some of the discussions?
Yeah, that was-
The DRB and also the Planning Commission.
Yes, thank you. That was an item that was thoroughly discussed as far as the makeup of the committee, or the commission, that is. On page 4, you can see at the top of the page where it starts, begins to talk about it. "The HPC shall consist of seven members appointed by the mayor and city council, with each appointing one member whose term will be concurrent with the appointing council member's term," which is pretty typical of all of our recommending or decision-making bodies that you all have chosen. And then it talks about their qualifications. And then, "In addition, two ex officio members may be appointed by and serve at the discretion of HPC who do not own property in the city limits and who are not residents of the City of Milton, but have expressed interest in surrounding, in the surrounding communities, and are regarded as valuable sources of information by consensus of the official members of HPC. An additional ex officio member shall be a member of HPC serving as a member of the City Design Review Board and appointed by the City Design Review Board." Typo. "Ex officio members of the HPC shall not have voting rights, shall not hold office in the HPC, and shall not be counted for the purpose of determining whether a quorum of HPC members exists at any HPC meeting." So basically, that third ex officio member would be a DRB member that's picked by their own body. So again, after much discussion, that's what was the recommendations of the Planning Commission.
Just a couple of quick thoughts in looking at that is that, one, if you're going to have ex officio members, and I don't know that in some of our other committees if we have ex officio members necessarily, but this may be the first time that we've got a committee that would be making the recommendations for who those members would be. And again, I don't necessarily have an opinion about it, but it just, it strikes me that that may be new ground that we haven't seen in other documents similar to this. So that just may be something that we want to think about. The other is that with the Design Review Board, a thought when I read this is whether or not you'd want to have one or possibly two, just because of the number of meetings that sometimes occur, so that if you had one that couldn't make it, you could have somebody else that could come in their stead. Because I think that part of the concern is that we have the Design Review Board represented at every one of those meetings. And then I guess just another question would be, would we really want the DRB to be a non-voting member, since the goal is to try to have consistency between those two entities? So that would be something that I'd hope that we could get some thought to between now and next week.
And can I just interject that we did have a discussion about making it a voting member, that person from the Design Review Board, but then it would create an eight-in-possible-tie situation in a vote. So that was a way, at least that was the discussion, so that was the thoughts of the Planning Commission.
And understand, one other thought would be, you could have one ex officio member that was maybe a voting member. But if we did that, maybe it would be this council that would help to decide who that person would be. Maybe if the HPC had a recommendation for somebody, maybe they make that recommendation. We, as a council, then could vote on that person. And I would assume that most often, we'd be looking to provide support to whoever they identified. But then you, in theory, could have those two ex officio members actually be voting members. And that would then take you from seven to nine.
Okay.
Just a thought. You know, whether you have it two and two, or... And again, knowing that oftentimes, you've got folks there that might have valuable input, to have them come and not be a voting member. I just don't know if that's as deserving of their time, if they're going to be there trying to provide that sort of input.
Any other questions? Alan?
Hey, Robin. Could you please speak to parts of the ordinance that either don't or do provide incentives for historic structure homeowners? Because I know that I think that was the intent, I believe, behind the prior use designation, but then I know there are other ways that we can incentivize. I was just wondering if there's anything in the ordinance whatsoever that addresses-
Incentives.
And that's one of the questions that was brought up by the Planning Commission, and that's, I think, an area that we need to work on more. And I don't think that this is, it may talk about incentives, but I think there's other documents down the line that would really address the incentives much more specifically than what we would need to. So I just need to do a little bit more research to find out where is the appropriate place for those incentives to be and what those incentives should be.
Is that something that could be a charge of the commission to look at ways to-
Exactly.
Okay, and then they would bring those recommendations-
Right. I mean, it's not just, they have to create a lot of documents after they're created, and then those documents would be reviewed and approved by you as the council.
Okay, thank you.
Just a quick thought is, within that incentive thought process, is that, you know, perhaps things like grants, and again, we don't necessarily have excess cash in our budget, but if Matt or others who are looking at grants, in addition to the Historic Preservation Committee and others, if they were to identify some dollars, maybe there could be a pool of funds that then staff and working with the commission could try to identify places where maybe those funds could be allocated to assist particular landowners. And, you know, it could be a case study that somebody would put forward to request particular assistance. Things like that might be future incentives that we could pursue.
Eric?
I know we've got a few members of our committee that we charged to put this ordinance together, and I didn't know if it was appropriate if they wanted to weigh in, or if they're comfortable with this after the deliberations they had at Planning Commission or not.
I live at 13095 Regent Trace, Milton, Georgia, 30004, the Rides of the Cove. We did do a lot of review with this. Gordon Hunter, Mark Hancock, myself, and Norman Broadwell, who's not here tonight, and Bob Myers, who's not present either, did work along with the Planning Commission at two meetings to develop a lot of this and to hash out a lot of it. We were asked, after the final meeting with the Planning Commission, to do some more research into penalties and incentives. I found several different ones. The incentives, from what I found in my research, they're not really clearly defined. A lot of it is tax incentives. I'm not really a tax man, so I really don't understand too much of it. The penalties were more severe and more broad. You could find penalties ranging from, let's see, for demolition of a historic building, it could be three to 10 years where that property became undevelopable. So if you really wanted to tear down historic structures, don't plan on building anything on it in the near future. So like I said, penalties, a little bit more broad range, a little bit clearly defined. Incentives was a little bit harder to find some stuff on, so you'd have to ask that the commission does a little bit more research on that.
Could I ask Travis a quick question, Julie? Travis, thank you for all your hard work on this. I know that it's a labor of love. In terms of penalties, and I know that you've done some of that research, between now and next week, if you don't have it with you, is that something maybe you could just either, don't feel like you've got to summarize it, but if you could just send any of that, it would be interesting to know, is it, are there other jurisdictions within the state of Georgia or other states?
Yeah, I actually, actually, some of the stuff I've got, Robin's got, I looked at, I believe there was a town in Colorado, some stuff in Florida, Texas, and I'm not sure if I've captured anything from Georgia or not.
Because I think you're right. I mean, the risk that we had and still have is when folks decide to demolish a property without getting appropriate permits or reviews. So I'd be really interested in things that you would suggest that would allow us to increase and encourage folks to do the right thing as it relates to historic-
I still personally, that the, you know, making it so the property comes undevelopable for as amount of time is, in this area at least, with property values the way they are, is definitely pretty harsh. But I also kind of think that, going back to the zoning ordinance, would a high fine as well. I mean, we have a small list of potential historic inventory anyway, so the more we can do to protect it, the better.
Well, and it's somewhat similar to the tree preservation ordinances that are out there in other states, when they try to reconcile the distinction between clearcutting and timbering, because a lot of times, unfortunately, timbering gets misused, and somebody will timber their property, and then in short order come and say, "Oh, we didn't really mean to timber. What we really wanted to do was to develop the land." And so there are some policies out there that if you were to timber your land in clearcut, that you then can't develop it for a period of time, and it would seem that that would be similar to what you've just talked about, is that if there was someone out there that demolished a property without appropriate approvals, that maybe there should be a delay if the intent was not pure, so to speak.
Yes, and that penalty actually, in some jurisdictions, didn't apply to only historic structures, but to building structures.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other questions for Travis?
I think I have one.
Karen?
My primary concern is to get as many people that have historic buildings to want them to be classified as historic structure. And I'm afraid we've got all these penalties in here, but we don't have any incentives. And if a building is not usable as it currently is, and they have to pay, keep it all up, we've got to have something incentivize them, or none of them are going to come in and ask to have it classified as historic structures. Is that something that, I mean, you said tax incentives and things like that. I mean, what else can we do to try to incentivize people?
I honestly, looking at the-
To put their property in a restricted, you know, but they can't use it how it currently is.
Looking at the tax incentives that I did see out there, I mean, granted, the city's mileage rate is so low that it's a couple hundred dollars to a lot of these people. So it wasn't really an incentive at all. I kind of think what Julie spoke to on grants, you know, if this commission once created was empowered to go out and seek those grants and research them for somebody owns a historical property, it'd definitely go a long way. They'd have the research done for them.
I think we've got to make sure we've got some real benefit for people to put their property as, to request it be designated historic, because while it is now, the penalties are great, but the benefits aren't.
Permit fees.
So y'all are looking at some other things, at some possibilities to try to, because I think that's a very important part, if what we really want is to protect these structures.
Agreed.
And Travis, I do think that the DNR-
Excuse me, Alan, have a question?
And I was just going to say I agree with Karen, because I do think that we need to build ways into, you know, incentivize them to hold the structures and take care of them, et cetera, other than just punitive action if they don't. I think that a good way to handle that, rather than to hold off on creating the Historic Preservation Commission, and rather than to assume that they will quickly work to provide those recommendations to us, when we do approve the ordinance, we could include as a timetable in there for a timeline to provide recommendations to us, to include some sort of incentives into the program as well. Rather than to assume, because we could get them two years from now if we don't set a deadline.
And maybe, and I'm, Mayor, I was just going to say that if we could also, along those lines, and I know that staff is busy on a lot of very important things, but maybe we could also, through our city manager, see if staff, in concert with folks that aren't yet appointed, obviously, so maybe even get staff to start maybe identifying a few things. I know the DNR and with some of the work Travis that you guys have done, between Georgia's programs and some of these others that you've talked about, if nothing else, we could at least start to language them so that folks understand that when this document comes forward, it's not intended to be without incentives, but that the whole point is to indeed incent people with future grants and things of that nature.
Go ahead, Eric.
So Travis, if you can, I don't know if you can, but to speak for your group or yourself or whatever, do y'all feel comfortable with perhaps some minor modifications or additions with this?
Well, I mean, of course, the prior use clause has already been removed, which we felt was very valuable, but I do understand that it only affects a limited amount of properties, even now or in the future. So at some point in the future, if we could work something similar type back into it or be that part of the incentive program that we look at, we'd like to see that. But as it stands, I think between ourselves and the Planning Commission, we're pretty happy with it.
Okay, Mel?
In Section 6B, "A failure to provide ordinary maintenance or repair," what comes to mind there mainly addresses structures. But included in this ordinance are historic sites. Historic sites may be in a variety of conditions. They may be overgrown. And this addresses penalties or police actions to maintain historic districts or buildings. I guess I'm concerned if a site is heavily wooded or overgrown, how do you address that aspect in this part of the ordinance? They want to-
Honestly, I would really want to say, and I've had a couple examples on, I apologize, I can't remember the name of the cemetery, but it's over on Johns Creek, off of Jones, Jones Bridge, but it's kind of up in the woods behind a Walmart. Similar, you've got a cemetery over here up in the woods behind Wild Wings Cafe. Really just through, and hopefully, the commission could be able to direct more towards forming maybe a society in the area, creating more interest. We have quite a few folks in this area that are either members of the Cherokee County Historical Society, Alpharetta's Historical Society. Perhaps the commission could, you know, focus their efforts on having a Historical Society of Milton, or even Old Milton County for the entire area, and just promote that. Promote that these sites need to be cleaned up. Promote reconnaissance of these sites. I mean, a lot of people don't know where these things are. You drive by it every day and have no idea. I mean, I know a lot of things with the growth we've experienced in the Crab Apple area, there's cemeteries there, you went over there, you drive by it every day within 30, 40 feet and have no idea off Charlotte Road. So I think just encouragement from the commission to identify these sites, you know, advertise them might help.
In your research, then, or your discussions in the last several months, I know Norman Broadwell and Billy Bates are on the commission, who are also members of the Alpharetta Historic Society. What kind of commentary or suggestions do they have in regards to what you just spoke about organizing volunteer groups in conjunction with a historical society?
Well, we haven't spoken too much on it. I guess a good example of promotion would probably be the Roswell Historical Society. They have the Henry Farm Site down in Roswell. They've heavily promoted the, some excavations there, rehabilitation of the structure of the site. I mean, I'm sure it could, if it can be done in Roswell, it can be done here, either in conjunction with them and Alpharetta's Historical Society, just-
I guess I've envisioned a combined Alpharetta-Milton Historical Society. I've talked with Norman about that briefly. Do you see any inclination to head in that direction and have a combined historical society?
Oh, definitely.
Certainly, the history of Milton doesn't stop at the political boundary of Alpharetta. It's all one history up here.
Oh, definitely. I agree. I'm a former board member of Alpharetta Historical Society, and I recall when they were celebrating their sequocentennial last year, that they had an old Milton County map. And as you look at the map, you see Alpharetta down this little corner, and you realize that 70% of that map is now the City of Milton. So it's kind of, that's not only their history, it's our history as well. It's a shared history. I mean, for years, of course, we considered this all Alpharetta. And now Milton High School's in Milton, you still have the old Milton High School with its history in Alpharetta and its ties. So I think we're forever bound by the histories of the two cities.
Joe?
On a somewhat related note, I'm wondering, and I appreciate your expertise, because I've actually learned a lot from, I thought my time was up. I wonder, because as Bill mentioned, as far as the sites and buildings and structures, et cetera, I know that one part of preserving our history is just cataloging the families of the area and that kind of thing. And I don't see anywhere where that's mentioned. I don't know if that's something that a historical society does, or whether that's something that the commission should be charged to do. I know that my appointee to this committee, Bob Myers, mentioned that it's something that he would like for us to do, because he has a longstanding history in this community. And I just wonder if there's any talk of that or anything like that.
It has been done a limited amount before that I'm aware of. I know with the TAG program, Thompson and Gifford Program, Milton High School at one time took some oral histories. I don't believe they recorded in like CD or digital form, so they'd need to be converted. Alpharetta Historical Society's got some tapes, they've got videos of the centennial celebration 51 years ago, stuff like that. And there's a lot of the family's still here. Of course, Constable Musk mentioned Norman Broadwell. Family's been here for a while, they have two roads named after him. Denzmore's family's still around. I'm sure some of the Rutgers are around, there was enough of them at one time. But yeah, I think that's something that would be a vital part of preserving our history, is collecting oral stories or even written. Parts of stuff we collected from study done in 1996 was a report done by a University of Georgia student on the Crab Apple area. And just being able to go back and seeing the way the Crab Apple area was in the mid-'60s is very valuable. I mean, it's completely different, and it gives a breakdown of family structures, social activities, social norms, what was against the rule, what wasn't against the rule and whatnot. Talks about some of the everyday, just everyday activities in Crab Apple that, you know, if we don't collect it now, it's going to be forgotten. He spoke of historic inventory. I think one of the first things the commission would need to do is re-inventory the area. We've not only had structures demolished before or after the last survey, but addresses have been changed. I'm sure you're aware, you might not, I don't know how long you've been here, but it used to all be Bethany Road. Now we have Bethany Road, Bethany Way, Bethany Ben, I'm sure it turns back into Bethany Road at some point. Addresses have been changed to align with Fulton County's 9/11 structure, so we might have that- we might have that building on inventory with the wrong address. Might be on a different lot now. So I think that would be one of the first things that we need to do is re-inventory what we have.
Would you recommend that we add a paragraph to the purpose under Section One that addresses cataloging historical families, stories, et cetera? Because that's not currently addressed by the ordinance at all.
I certainly wouldn't be opposed to it.
And just along those lines, I don't know if you guys have ever listened to National Public Radio, but NPR does some amazing histories and oral histories and it really is, it's a fabulous way to capture. And I know that some of our volunteers, Patty Silva's done some of that on her own, but I think if we could do it more formally, it'd be a great addition. So whether we capture it in the purpose or not, I surely support having oral histories captured as, as part of the forever history of Milton.
Sure. Thank you Travis for you and the whole committee for all your work. If they don't have any more council discussion, I'm going to ask the clerk to say on the next item.
Item number two is discussion and preliminary recommendations from the transportation master plan. This will be presented by Kim Lee Horn and Associates.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here with you tonight. What we wanted to do was to go through the transportation plan scenario concepts that we have developed so far. What I'm going to do is have James Fowler, Christina Pastor, present those first. Then we're going to come back at the end and talk about some of the key activities that have occurred up until this point with the schedule and also talk about the funding options that relate to each of these scenario concepts.
And I've got the PowerPoint up together. Is there something I can use to change those slides? Okay. We have published a draft version of our final report that has our preliminary recommendations in that. And TSAC as well as city staff returned some comments on that end of last week. And so we're in the process of incorporating those comments and we will send you guys the revised draft final report tomorrow with the staff's comments incorporated into that. But tonight we wanted to go over our preliminary concepts with you, go ahead and get that conversation started so that you guys could see what we were looking at. Okay. Hopefully our font isn't too small, but we have mostly pictures. In keeping with the city's vision, we were asked to look at Milton's rural character and preserve that through our recommendations and our corridor improvement. And so in working with TSAC and the public and hearing comments from you as well, we identified some strategic corridors that could be widened to accommodate some of the growth in the larger Atlanta regions that, as you know, Milton is under tremendous pressure because they're in the midst of such a fast growing region. And so in order to capture and attract some of that commuter traffic that currently threatens the inside of Milton and draw some of those commuters to the outside, we've identified some key corridors that could be widened to help draw commuters from Cherokee and Forsyth County and get them to the four hundred in downtown Atlanta, which is a critical connection. So one of the corridors that we have initially proposed to be widened is Arnold Mill as well as Rucker and Old Milton Parkway. And then also Hopewell, Hamby and SR nine down to four hundred in this direction. And hopefully that would draw away some of the growth that's going to be happening around Milton and help protect that rural character that is in the center of Milton. Also, one of the key things that we heard from the TSAC committee was a greater need for east-west connectivity. And so in keeping with that, one of the ideas that we wanted to propose was a new connection from New Providence Road to Arnold Mill. And this is not a wide connection that would draw traffic into Milton, but would on a smaller level provide some accessibility for residents within Milton.
One of the things I did want to say about this though is we should acknowledge, I know that Councilwoman Deversa was with us at our last TSAC meeting, there is a diversity of opinion about east-west connectivity on TSAC. So this is something that what we agreed at the last TSAC meeting, based on that diversity of opinion, that we would continue to carry this connection forward. We have a public meeting at the Milton Roundup coming up. We've got some public opinion survey results about east-west connectivity that we want to be able to consider. So at this point, we're going to continue to carry some of that forward and let the public give us more input into it. But I certainly wouldn't want to, to move forward without acknowledging that particular, that's one of the particular issues that both that and how Milton's future growth and such, where it might occur and how it might all fit together with the transportation plan, there's not a consensus as yet amongst TSAC and there's really quite a diversity of opinion that's great debate that we're having on it. But I just wanted to be sure we acknowledge that as we move forward with that discussion.
Okay.
Could you just explain that intersection then a little bit more rather than to, just to highlight it, because I don't have my reading glasses. If you could just speak to where you see that occur, I know we've talked about it, yes.
Okay, and you can see it on your map as well, it's an orange line from Arnold Mill to New Providence Road. And so what that would be would be a small two lane connection and it would be a rural roadway cross section. It would not be a major corridor that would attract a large amount of traffic.
So it would just be, it would be in addition to the existing road?
There currently is no connection in this area, if I understand correctly.
Yeah, we're, I'm asking where would the connection go, where would you create the road?
Oh, okay.
The, the new connection would actually go just north of the existing landfill. Just kind of, just to give you an idea of where we're talking about. It would be skirting on that northern of the landfill.
Okay. And in theory, would it be on the edge of that waste management landfill?
Just to the north of it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And so moving on, in your packets, actually at the back, we pulled out the intersection recommendations. And so each individual intersection is broken down by specific recommendations, but just to go over it very quickly here, because there's twenty-five recommendations that we made. We've identified seven locations that have the potential to accommodate roundabouts at those areas. We would like to stress that any roundabout improvement would have to be accompanied by a roundabout feasibility study, but just based on site distances and looking at the geometry of those intersections, those look like good potential places for roundabouts. And beyond that, we also looked at intersections close to four hundred. We did not see a need for roundabouts in those locations just because of the growth that could be experienced in this area. You could potentially overwhelm a roundabout and just thinking twenty years out, that might overwhelm a roundabout. So we would prefer a signal at these four location along the Georgia four hundred corridor. And then beyond that, other intersections that you see identified on the map in orange are lanes or signage improvements to help drivers as they approach and move through the intersections that would help move them through more efficiently and more safely and increase driver expectancy. And then we've identified three intersections that are actually currently being looked at by Milton Public Works staff. I think you are aware of them as well. There's a signal that's, has been ordered for Deerfield Parkway and SR nine. And then the two intersections, Providence Road and Birmingham Highway as well as Providence, New Providence Road and Arnold Mill. Those are currently being looked at by Milton staff.
And on those two that are currently being looked at, do we, are we going to have an update this evening in terms of where that is, in terms of design? I mean, I just since we're talking about those intersections.
If, if you want an update, Carter Sharon can provide one.
I just, I meant like a really quick one, just in terms of the Birmingham Providence and then obviously Arnold Mill.
Do you want to do that? Yeah?
Yeah.
Come on up, Carter.
Yeah, we can get those questions a lot, it's good.
This will be, will be real quick. The project framework agreement to the PFA has finally made it through the first steps of signatures. And so as of last week, it was on the commissioner's desk waiting for that signature, the final signature. So as soon as we get that, we'll get the notice to proceed as well as issue the notice to proceed for the engineers to get going on the preliminary, preliminary engineering and design for both of those intersections.
And I know that historically there had been some designs conducted by GDOT. Are they looking to lever any of those previous designs or are they starting from scratch? Can you speak to that?
A little bit of both. They, they have one concept designed for both of those. They'll take that and create two more concept designs that will be presented to the intersection committee and then presented to council for final approval.
Okay, so you're anticipating three different designs for both?
Well, the New Providence at one forty intersection, there's not a whole lot that can be done there. So we would like to see three, but whether or not they can come up with three alternatives for that particular one, I'm not sure. But we are looking forward three on the three seventy-two Providence, New Providence intersection.
And did Kim Lee Horn, when you were looking at intersections, did you speak to, and it's only because I don't have my reading glasses, did you speak to Providence and Birmingham? Was that one that was in green as a potential roundabout?
Providence and Birmingham? It was not a potential roundabout, particularly due to site distance issues as you approach that, it can be unsafe.
I mean, currently I know it is. I just, historically I know, and especially with GDOT now talking about their support for roundabouts, I'd be curious as to why we wouldn't consider this. I know historically they talked about changing the topography so that you would gain some site distance, so that obviously there'd be some different things that would have to be done if that was pursued.
Well, and I think in our initial discussions with the engineer, that'll be a concept that is evaluated. How far that gets through the evaluation process will just depend on a lot of those types of issues and how much work associated with that roundabout will have to be done.
So the fact that this map doesn't highlight it doesn't mean that it wouldn't be pursued?
That's, that's right.
Okay.
This, this will kind of give you the overall. When we get down to actual specific details of design, other things may become available to us that we may not have seen at this high level evaluation.
Thank you.
Carter, would you mind sharing with the council too, the estimated timeframe? I know we're starting preliminary engineering, but want to let everybody know it's not a real quick process and maybe two, three years.
Yeah, it's not a quick process. Anytime that you are using federal funds for these types of projects, there's a long drawn out evaluation and environmental process that goes along with it. So we are probably looking at two to three years out before we start seeing construction on these projects.
Thanks for the update.
You're welcome.
Ms. Carter said the high level of analysis that we applied, we looked at things like the geometry of approach, geometry, site distance, right of way constraints. And so we identified some of the low hanging fruit, so to speak, of intersections. It doesn't necessarily rule anything out and it's not necessarily set in stone what we did, but it's a direction. As part of the project, we met with an equestrian focus group, some members of the equestrian community came and met with us and gave us some recommendations. And as you know, horses are a very strong theme here in Milton and are very much an asset to the community. And so with some strategic improvements, that asset could be leveraged actually to create Milton as a destination for members of the equestrian community. And indeed, we heard from people that own farms that had people from surrounding areas coming to them. And so that could actually be leveraged as a revenue stream and built up. Some of the things that we heard from them that night in the northwest section of Milton, that's primarily where the equestrian facilities exist today. And so that's where they are interested in seeing the greatest amount of improvements and investments. It wouldn't make sense, obviously, to invest in horse trails throughout the city, but in the northwest section, that would be the most strategic and logical place. Also, they would like to, in the trail plan, they like the trail plan and would like to give consideration to just the surface materials as well as the right of way and buffers between roadways and the trails, just in that area. In addition to that, there is a unique opportunity for an equestrian trail facility along the AGL gas line that is up there. And actually, if you walk out onto the gas line, you see horse tracks there, so some people are using it today. But there could be an opportunity with talks with AGL to create a unique board where we can just have a picture of that shim that's private and separated from roadways. And so that would be a great place to actually walk horses. In addition to that, they would like to see pedestrian or equestrian facilities at Birmingham Park, and I know there's already talks of that. And then in addition to that, maybe some information on the city's website, a page possibly to exchange information and provide information about Milton's equestrian assets. And so those things combined could strategically position Milton to capture some of that equestrian focus from the region.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
When you're talking about the use potentially of the gas utility easements, had there been discussion also about the transmission lines with GTC? Obviously, that's a separate utility and they're separate areas, but very similar in nature. So was there a discussion about those as well?
I'm not sure if that specific one was, was brought up that night, but certainly any of the utility easements could be discussed.
It would just be a suggestion. I don't think we'd want to limit it to just eight.
You can add that as well.
Yeah, just a suggestion because you have a lot of, unfortunately, you have a lot of transmission lines that do run through that area, but it would be similar to, actually several of these utilities cross, particularly they cross within the Birmingham Park area. But obviously, the key is to be able to get permission from both GTC and AGL to be able to utilize those easements. But if we could broaden that a little bit, it probably would make sense.
Absolutely. Moving on, we also met with a cyclist group here in Milton. And many of the things that we discussed that night, among top concerns was driver awareness and education. There's a strong group of cyclists in Milton and as well as from surrounding areas that come through Milton. And so again, a great resource could be an information page on the city's website that just provides rules and regulations relating to cyclists and drivers and that interaction that takes place, as well as posted information and information exchange regarding group rides. There's a lot of groups that ride in Milton regularly. And so just leveraging that would be a simple thing. Also, there's some opportunities for some increased signage and striking in Milton. You may know this, but Roswell is actually installing bike boxes and charos in certain places in their city. And basically, that would just cost the paint to do that. And what a bike box is, if you did not know, it allows a cyclist to pull up at an intersection in front of vehicles and safely make a left-hand turn so that vehicles can see cyclists before they move through the intersection. In addition, charos or shared access arrows, as they're called, for narrow roadways that you might see in many places in Milton where there's not enough room for a full paved shoulder or a, indeed a full bike lane, you can paint these charos and it actually increases driver expectancy. It lets drivers know where to expect cyclists and it allows cyclists to know where they can safely navigate and be visible to drivers as they're moving along those narrow roadways. In addition to that, we'd like to recommend bike racks at more facilities around Milton, particularly commercial destinations, and that can be accomplished through overlay ordinance. Including paving of shoulders or bike lanes with other roadway improvement projects, it can be expensive, obviously, to widen a road and you wouldn't probably do that specifically for a bicycle, but as roadway improvements are made, you can incorporate perhaps just a paved shoulder or a full bicycle lane at those locations. We also met with the Milton Disability Awareness Committee and they identified some specific places that they thought could be improved. And we won't go through all of this tonight with a lot of information, but specifically regarding timing of pedestrian crossings as well as crosswalks and gaps and sidewalks at places where they frequent. Also, one of the key things that we heard from the disability committee was the need for an expanded paratransit service. And a paratransit service is an on-tall service specifically for the disabled. And that may be an expensive thing to implement citywide, but we would certainly like to put that on the table to be discussed. It can be implemented through many different ways, possibly partnerships with surrounding communities, through the North Fulton CTP, or potentially expanded service from MARTA. MARTA Mobility currently operates within a quarter mile of their existing bus routes. And as you probably know, bus routes only access the very southeastern edge of Milton. And so coverage does not extend throughout the entire city of Milton for MARTA Mobility Service. Regarding pedestrian improvements, Milton has, as you know, a great trail plan. And implementing that trail plan would actually address most of the needs of pedestrians throughout the city. So we would like to recommend that Milton focus on key locations such as near Birmingham crossroads, anywhere near your commercial districts, Crab Apple crossroads, the southeast where office and retail exist, focusing on those and expediting those sections as well as around schools, particularly where the Safe Routes to School Grant does not extend out to. In addition to that, in reviewing our intersections and doing our drives through the city, we noted several places where crosswalks intersected roadways, but there were no painted crosswalks. The sidewalk ended at the intersection and there was no crosswalk. The sidewalk ended at the intersection and there was no crosswalk for pedestrians. So, painting those crosswalks as indicated in the intersection recommendations would be of great value to the city. Regarding bridges, as you know, Milton is undergoing a bridge assessment. And out of that, just to pull a piece, the four bridges that were identified as structurally deficient, for these four, one of which is actually in Milton's current short-term work program, we recommend that the other three be included in the next round of work programs as available. And then, moving on to transit improvements, we talked about the need for paratransit service, and that would be a much more cost-efficient service as opposed to a full citywide regular transit service. Currently, there's not a demand that would support the cost benefit for that. However, what's critical for Milton is to realize the relationship between Milton and the downtown Atlanta area, and then to going into the North Fulton CTP to encourage the creation of managed bus lanes along Georgia 400. There's a parking ride facility at Windward Parkway. If a managed bus lane is provided, that would allow those buses to move actually faster during peak hours than the personal vehicles, and it's a much more attractive feature than actually sitting in traffic with those personal vehicles. And so, if a managed bus lane can be provided, that would much increase transit usage. In addition to that, we've done some other research and studies. The city council has already seen our pavement management evaluation and recommendations. Our access management guide, as well as our impact fee feasibility assessment, has been handed over to city staff and they're commenting on that, and then we're finalizing those documents. We actually included the executive summary from our impact fee feasibility assessment in the back of the packet. And it, just to go over that very briefly, there is not a huge revenue potential from impact fees based on our consultant's assessment, but there is some, in order of road potential, and then after that is parks, and then fire. Those services, there's the potential for impact fees. And then after that, and that's the page there. After that, Crab Apple Crossroads, we did an in-depth analysis of Crab Apple Crossroads community, and Christina Pasor is going to go over some of those recommendations as well.
For those of you, first of all, thank you to those of you who have attended some of our Crab Apple meetings. In the month of August, we held a Crab Apple charrette right here with many of the members of your community to discuss some of our preliminary analysis, as well as to understand and get some feedback from the community on things that are important to them about Crab Apple area. Just last Thursday, we had an update, a stakeholder meeting for the Crab Apple area, to talk a little bit about what we heard from the charrette from the community members, as well as some of the additional analysis that we've done, and some refined concepts for the area that we've started to talk about. One of the first things that we heard from the members are the need for bypasses around the Crab Apple intersection. Now, James talked a little bit about some of the recommendations that we're making as part of the CTP, and trying to divert some of the traffic that's coming through Milton and working its way through Milton now, to areas outside along Arnold Mill and Rucker Road. What we're hoping to do with recommendations like that is to take some of the traffic that is driving through Crab Apple right now, and take them out of the Crab Apple area and move them to other roadways that are more logical destinations for them. And really, our focus is, we want Crab Apple to be a destination. That's very much what it is becoming, not an area for cut-through traffic necessarily, but an area that people actually want to stop and frequent the retail and things like that. And so, in addition to some of the recommendations we're making as part of the CTP, we also wanted to look at opportunities to make the intersection at Crab Apple work a little bit better than it does today. And what we heard over and over again is opportunities for bypasses. Now, if you look, we have a very, very conceptual opportunity for bypasses around the intersection. If you look to the west of the intersection, some of those, because of the new development that has come in in the last couple of years, some of those bypasses may or may not exist to some degree, but they may be a little bit hard to navigate. They're not very direct bypasses. And so, what we want to talk about on the west side is finding opportunities to formalize those connections and allow people to really understand that those connections exist. And of course, we would also have to work with the residents of the area, because those are redeveloping areas with some new residential development. On the east side of the intersection, though, we don't really have any of those pre-existing opportunities. And so, we've looked at two new opportunities in particular. On the northeast side, looking at connecting from Bentworth over to Charlotte and creating a new connection there on the northeast side. And then, on the southeast side, taking a look at connecting from mid-Broadwell over to Broadwell, somewhere in the vicinity of that south area where you can see the area today. And so, by being able to make those connections around the intersection, we have an opportunity to divert some of that traffic that's trying to turn and go elsewhere outside of Crab Apple, to get them away from the Crab Apple intersection and divert them to other areas. By doing that, we were able to remove, and this is very approximately, just looking, approximately thirty percent of the traffic is coming through that intersection. And so, we'll talk in a little bit about what that means for the Crab Apple intersection itself. One of the other things that we heard, both from the city council and from some of our residents, are there's a lot of traffic at the school in the morning. There was very much a divided opinion on, at the Crab Apple charrette, about whether or not we should be adding new connections over to the school. And a lot of what we heard from the parents and from the teachers was they're concerned about security if we add new connections over to the school. And so, understanding that, we decided we have not moved forward with recommendations to connect to the school. But, we did do some observations during both the morning and the afternoon peak at the school to see some of what's going on there. And one of the things that we noticed is there's a lot of queuing that's going on, particularly in the mornings, both on Birmingham and on Freemanville, with people trying to get into the school. And so, it's not a capacity increase. We don't want to recommend that this is not widening the road for people to cut through, because that's not what our purpose is, but by widening the road and providing a little bit of extra storage, we can remove the cars that are currently causing congestion on our north-south roadways and bring them into the school area faster, therefore, getting rid of some of those congestion issues on your north-south roads. And so, therefore, we've discussed potentially widening, adding turn lanes or even a through lane, just to help to remove that traffic.
If I may, you're clarifying that on School Drive, Milton High School, I'm just in the northwestern.
On School Drive.
So, did any of these other connections speak to the elementary school, or this is all focused on the middle and the high?
When we talked about new, any new connections back through there, we heard security and we heard that there are a lot of pedestrian connections between the schools, and so, adding a new roadway would create more vehicular conflicts with the...
Right, so I just want to make sure I was hearing you correctly.
Yes.
That when you talked about connecting to School Drive, you've eliminated that as a recommendation, and now you're focused more on what can you do within School Drive?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
One of the other things that we heard a lot of discussion about at the Crab Apple charrette was pedestrian connections and difficulty with crossing Crab Apple Road. And because of our discussion with Crab Apple potentially becoming a village center, a town center, and with all the retail development and residential development that's occurring, particularly on the west side of that intersection, there's bound to be crossing traffic, people trying to come north and south of the road. And so, we took a look at Crab Apple as it exists today, and granted, this is a slightly older aerial, so please bear with us, we can never seem to get the latest and greatest aerials, no matter how hard we try. But, the roadway cross-section looks a bit like it does today. And you can see that there's quite a bit of turn lanes. This is a GDOT facility, and so, as part of a GDOT facility, you normally see quite a few turn lanes, some of the large sweeping right-turn lanes to help people get quickly into and out of the development. And so, in some sections, we see anywhere from three to five lanes of traffic, which could be as much as sixty feet. And so, that's quite a bit of crossing distance, and you also notice that there are no crosswalks, because are there necessarily good places to cross right now? So, what we've heard from a lot of the residents is, they like to cross at the Crab Apple intersection, because there's really no safe place to try to cross anywhere from that. What we've done is taken that same five-lane cross-section, and like I said, it varies from three to five lanes, but we've taken the five-lane cross-section and talked about some opportunities for what we can possibly do there. And you'll notice, we like to, we've maintained the two travel lanes in each direction, and we also feel that the left-turn lanes are very important, because left-turning traffic can really cause a lot of backups and congestion from people having to wait to find a gap to turn into the development. So, we feel left-turn lanes are important. The question is, is whether or not maybe the right turns are as important. And right now, some of the roads are very large, those turn lanes are very large and sweeping, and we've heard a lot of people comment that people really fly in and out of the development quickly, and it makes it very easy when you have a very large turn like that, to not have to take your time and be careful of where the curb line is. And so, that just helps people to drive that much faster. And so, then, are they necessarily paying attention to pedestrians that are crossing? Also, pedestrians have further to cross. So, those are some things we wanted to talk about. What we've done with the right-turn lanes here is potentially consider on-street parking. Now, that's also something that came up for debate within the charrette. Some people are for it, some people are against it. It's something we think that we should at least consider. It would obviously have to be a conversation with GDOT as well. But, what we've done right now is converted those right-turn lanes maybe into on-street parking. Additionally, with the discussion of pedestrians trying to cross the street, we've looked at potential for crosswalks in certain locations, and this is not a specific location along Crab Apple, this is just an idea of what could exist. But, with crosswalks, in addition to maybe just striping them, what we should also maybe consider are things like asphalt, crosswalks, asphalt paving that is special, it's a different color, and it's also textured. So, it looks like brick pavers, but it's a lot easier to maintain, and it still gives the visual and the textured feel, so that when drivers are driving over, they pay more attention and realize that this is a pedestrian area. Additionally, we've also shown a median here, just to talk about opportunities for pedestrian refuge. And so, if people are trying to cross the street, maybe this is a good opportunity. If they can't make it all the way across the street, they at least have a place to stand safely without having to worry about being hit by a car that may be coming. So, this is just something that we'd like to offer for consideration. And this is just the cross-sectional view of that same thing, that gives you an idea of where the roads are, where the travel lanes are, the on-street parking, and the median, just to give you a different perspective. Finally, what we talked about, after we were able to divert some of the traffic, what are our opportunities for the Crab Apple intersection itself? And we have two to present. And we've got the more standard, the standard intersection is what we're showing here. We've aligned just to the west and widened just to the west to avoid any impact on historic properties, and by actually realigning just a little bit further to the west, we may have an opportunity to reconstruct the porch on the southeastern corner of that historic property. We saw that there once used to be a very attractive porch on the front. Realigning the road a little bit may give us an opportunity to reconstruct that. Additionally, we've eliminated the southbound left-turning movement and can potentially discuss relocating that to that northeastern connection, that diversion. So, creating opportunities for a median there and additional opportunities for pedestrians to have refuge crossing the street. Additionally, in the eastbound direction, we've looked at removing the right-turn lane that's right there now, because it is rather large, and we also don't think it's as necessary, and instead, use that same pavement to potentially add a left-turn lane, which we think is a more important use than the right-turn lane. So, that's one opportunity that we've looked at. And the second is, we heard, some people say that they still wanted us to look more at the roundabout option. There are some issues with the roundabout. You would have to divert quite a bit of traffic in order to really make the roundabout work, and that concerns us a little bit, because roundabouts can break easily if you have, if you really overload it with too much traffic. So, we would need to make sure that the traffic was really and truly leaving that intersection. Additionally, there are some right-of-way impacts. Because the roundabout is a lot wider, it would have some additional impacts to some of the properties. Also, with it being a very large pedestrian connection and with some of the children coming from the schools, roundabouts are a little bit harder to navigate from a pedestrian perspective. And so, that's something else to consider with the pedestrian traffic, is it's a little bit further to walk with a roundabout, and it's also, you have to pay a little bit more attention, because the signal doesn't tell you when you actually get to cross. So, those are some of the considerations. We've left those both out on the table and are looking for public comment on those, but at this point in time, we are moving in the direction that we feel more comfortable with the standard intersection for a multitude of reasons.
I know we've given you an awful lot of information, so hopefully I can get back...
Quick question, Fay. Are you anticipating prioritizing these areas where the roundabouts are recommended? From your perspective, from your engineering perspective, are waiting to get through these public comment sessions and then to determine what the priorities may be?
We are waiting to get through the next few public comment opportunities. One is this coming Saturday, the Milton Roundup, and then the next one is on November the fifth. We have a TSAC meeting that evening and also a public meeting following that. And so, once we get some more public input into that and we can couple the remainder, that'll really be the bulk of the public input at that point, is really essentially all of it. So, once we get all that in and put that with the public opinion poll survey results and input we get back from you, that'll really give us the gauge, I think, that we need to be able to prioritize those intersectional areas.
Okay. And what is the setup for this Saturday? Are you, so if we need to maybe tell people where they can go to be involved, is there just going to be a table, or?
We're in the center area.
We have placed them at a very advantageous place since it's our event, and so that people will have to walk by. I can't tell you anything more than that, because I don't have to...
I don't know, look for the balloons.
And you're going to have maps and me showing, kind of like we did with our visioning, and they can just make comments?
Yes, and we're going to have comment forms, just to be able to actually just talk to people and record things and let them record what they want to report as well.
Okay.
So, a couple of things, though. I know we've presented you with a lot of information tonight, and it's a lot to absorb. I don't want you to think that there is a hasty decision point coming. We have approximately two months left before we're looking for, hopefully, concluding this with the council adoption. I want to go over a little bit about that. As we've already mentioned, we've got the Milton Roundup and what will also be the Crab Apple Town Hall meeting to continue our conversation about the presentation you heard tonight on Crab Apple. On November the 10th, we'll have our sixth TSAC meeting. Our last meeting was very much a working session. This one will really begin to hone in on what our, the recommendations are going to be and what the TSAC committee will be bringing back to you. And it will be followed by a public meeting that evening. So, on November the 5th, we'll be in this room, and we meet from 6:00 to 7:00 with TSAC, and then from 7:00 to 8:00 with the public. On November 9th, we'll be back to you in another city council work session to discuss what those final recommendations are, offer you some prioritization. One of the things that we want to talk about in a few moments tonight, too, is a little bit about some of the funding concerns that I know that is on everybody's mind, everybody has. There's not enough money for any of these programs. Joel Stone, who's with our team, is here with us tonight. Joel has decades of experience at the Atlanta Regional Commission and some experience with GDOT before that. And typically, Joel and I, with my federal highway background, really work together on trying to think through what some of those funding opportunities can be. That said, and before, not to spill our thunder too much in a few moments when we get into this a little bit more, but there are no magic bullets, and I wouldn't want to suggest that to you at all, but we do want to talk a little bit about how you have an opportunity to be more strategic about funding, I think, than perhaps we've seen in some other areas. And then, on December the 14th, again, a presentation at a council work session of the final report, with the adoption scheduled after that. So, we've got a couple of months left that we're going to be really working very closely with you. We've had great interaction, not only between our staff and the CPAC, but also between the TSAC and CPAC committees. I know George can tell you, I've been at a number of CPAC meetings. There's a couple of things that I think that are shaping up to be key issues. One is the east-west connectivity issue that I talked about earlier. Lot of diversity of opinion about that, and I think it relates to the other issue, which is, how do we want to grow? Where do we want to grow? Do we want to grow? And what do we want to be? One of the things that you saw earlier with our recommendations, and this was a result of our close working with CPAC, was in looking at, you know, go back to our original vision statement, of Milton as a rural, a community that is ruled by nature, and wants to maintain that community character, and at the same time, understands the need to leverage some of the opportunities that are out there in a way that enhances the community, the economic viability, and the corridors that can serve in that kind of capacity now. When we looked at that, we looked at, and this was along with conversations with CPAC, looked at that some of that growth and development that limited or focused and managed as it is, would be more focused perhaps more in the southern portion of Milton, and the northern portion would... and the, the northern portion would, would be left largely rural, um, as it is now. But even at that, it's in, it's along corridors that are already somewhat commercial corridors or state route nine. The, the idea of making Crab Apple Crossroads really become that destination, um, that it has the opportunity to be. And then this notion of how we can leverage the commuter traffic in a way that it doesn't pose a negative impact, um, to Milton, but a positive one. Another thing that came out of the last TSAC meeting is we've had a lot of conversation about what are some of the things that we can do to help manage all this commuter traffic as it relates to 400 and the 400 corridor? And the interesting, um, I guess, commentary and conversation that came out of that is, wait a minute, we're talking a lot about how we get commuters or how we get people through around us and over the 400. What's 400 doing for Milton? And so, we've gone back and worked with, um, Lickley Advisory Group, who's our marketing folks, and we have begun to develop a, a strategy, or we have, we already had sort of a transportation piece up, but really focusing that strategy on how 400 can help bring people to Milton for shopping and dining and that kind of thing, in a way that helps support the Milton track space. Um, so with that, um, I guess I wanted to be sure that we, we talked about what some of those key issues are. We talked about the remaining schedule, and we wanted to talk to you a little bit about funding, um, and how that will be shaping up over these next couple of months as we finalize this. Um, we really need, um, council's direction on what are the package of improvements that you want to move forward with, that you feel like do support the Milton community and the future that you want it to have? And as we can shape that package of projects that are going to be in this plan, that's going to help us do two things. One, it's going to help us in looking at funding strategies, because as I said earlier, um, there are no magic bullets. Um, you hear people, you know, in the past, though, what we did is we get projects and we go, okay, federal, state, local, PE right-of-way construction. And that's how we kinda do it. And that really doesn't work so well, because what we were never doing very effectively was matching the funding to the projects. And giving an example of that is, um, if you have a project that has a lot of, of a consequence, you've heard Carter mention earlier tonight about how long the environmental process can be, um, on a federal aid project. Um, what you try to do is match your resources to the projects in a way that's effective. Where you have really straightforward, simple projects that you can carry forward through the federal aid process and through that federal environmental process with very little, you know, ado, that's where you use that money. Whereas if you have something that's more complex and the federal process is going to become very costly and very time-consuming, we need to figure out other kinds of funding strategies, state, local, um, special, um, sales taxes, whatever it might be. Um, some of these stimulus funding, uh, project types that we're seeing still coming out and those kinds of things. So, um, I think on the funding side, one of the things we have an opportunity here is to be much more strategic about how we package the funding types with the project type. The other thing is, with this schedule, the next thing that you will see happen that is very much related to this, but not a part of this, is the week of January the 11th, um, will be the week that all five jurisdictions that are participating in the North Fulton CTP will be holding their Community Needs Assessment charrettes. So there'll be one here in Milton. Um, and one of the things that we're going to have ready in Milton is a very fresh, very current list of needs, ready to put right into that process and begin to, because one of the funding opportunities that's there, and, and I think our team alluded to this a little bit earlier, is a lot of the needs that we see in Milton, um, not so much internal to Milton with the intersection improvements, but some of these larger needs, more costly needs, are multi-jurisdictional needs. They need to be looked at from a cost-sharing basis amongst all the communities that benefit from them. Even with the North Fulton CTP, we're not only looking at those five jurisdictions, but we're looking at all the county's surroundings. Um, and we have stakeholder committee coming up with all the surrounding counties. So, this puts us in a great position, kind of January, to have the tool that we need to really engage that conversation about how can we all put our dollars together, because everybody's dollars are limited, to do some of these more major projects in a way that benefits us all. Joel, did you want to add anything else?
It's hard for you, Fay, to quit talking. I told her I wasn't gonna give up my night and come up here if she was gonna do all the talking. Uh, as far as funding is concerned, there's nothing new in that. Every study that I get involved in and have done for years, we end up at the same place. How are we going to fund this program? You know, most of the time, it's the stumbling block. If it stops, if it stops our plans, at least the immediate plans, unless we have a package, and she talked about that package, unless we have a package that you can say to others and to yourself, here are a small number of projects that we want to put our weight behind, political, social, whatever, technical, otherwise, that we want to put ourselves behind to get them done. If in fact, we were to go to the state, the federal government, anyone else with a large package, then they're just gonna look at you like, well, okay, you gotta be kidding. Uh, the city of Milton, with, uh, what are you talking about? Congestion compared to the rest, rest of our region? But if we can say, okay, we do have a problem with through traffic, we want you to help us with that, we're going to help ourselves internally, we have a list of projects, and we have a mechanism for funding that. It may not be able to fund it in one year, two years, five years, maybe in 10. Then you have a much better chance of getting some extra funding from other sources as well as your own funding allocated in the right place. If you don't do that, this plan, uh, will just go on your shelves if you don't come up with a funding mechanism to do that. And you don't come up with a smaller number of projects that you can concentrate on and tell other people about. My job is, is we have our consultant meetings, is to keep reminding the team, how are they going to fund this? Where are we going to suggest it? Go into the priorities, and how do we fund it? And they get tired of me saying that, uh, but that's probably one of my roles, because I've been there so many years and so many times with these type of plans. Any questions on funding that you think I might know something that you don't? Because I doubt if I do on funding. It's probably all out there, pretty straightforward.
We'll head out and end up for questions about anything we've presented tonight. And again, uh, you've got lots of, please remember that you've got a couple of mon, I mean, we want all your questions, but just remember, you've, we've got a couple of months really to work through all of this, um, before we conclude. And, and we're going to be thoughtfully and purposefully, though, moving through that.
Fay, um, sorry. Sorry, I apologize. I just had a quick question, um, related to the inquiry about the public comment. Will you share that information with us? Will you have something, when you present to us, what the comments were from the public?
Uh-huh. And we, um, we have been offering public comment summaries along the way. Um, and then you also have the results tonight, interesting results, of the, um, this is now, this is just a summary. And if you want all the detail of it, we've got all the detail of it, and you're welcome to do this. We're trying not to necessarily overload you with all of it. But this is the survey results from the public opinion, the scientifically valid public opinion survey. Um, and I thought that there were some things that were very interesting, um, with regard to, um, maintaining the city's rural tradition, um, and allowing some development. But clearly, over a third or about a third of the residents, um, wanting to be sure that that rural tradition is really, um, held on to. Um, the idea of, and, and at the time when the survey was being developed and we were getting comments, think of that term downtown area as activity center, rather than downtown area for, as far as Crab Apple goes. But there's a lot of support for Crab Apple really becoming a, a strong activity center within Milton. Um, there is a lot of support, um, for particular, you know, transportation improvements. Um, and those are all rooted here. So there's a lot of good information in here as well, um, with regard to that. But these upcoming meetings, we will be sharing with you the comments that come in.
Can we also, I'm sure you guys can, um, uh, provide this by area or by district? Maybe by character area is more appropriate. It'd be interesting to see how the respondents provide information based on where they actually live.
We, um, we can ask that in these upcoming meetings on this. It was actually reported out, and we have that in the detail, it was reported out by each of your districts.
Okay.
If people knew what district they lived in. And I should tell you that, interestingly enough, most people did not know whose district they lived in.
And this is a quick footnote, is that we're all representing all of Milton. So, just to make that clear, since every, because it, it's a continued educational component, that we may live in a particular district, but all of us represent the whole of Milton.
Bill? Fay.
Yes, sir.
Regarding funding, um, understanding that, uh, there's a discrete fund out there, at least the state and feds also. Everybody's fighting for the same pot of gold out there to improve their, their transportation programs. What, uh, what sets one application apart from another? Uh, applications for some improvements in Milton versus, uh, Johns Creek or Sandy Springs? Understanding, too, that you work for these different jurisdictions and you're kind of fighting the battles against, uh, yourself, too.
Actually, I don't think of it that way at all, because I think that the, especially with the North Fulton CTP, rather than these very individual kind of improvements, I think the thing, the focus of that is these broader improvements that would benefit everyone, that genuinely would benefit everyone. So I don't really look at it that way. But I will tell you, I think there's, I think there's about, there's a few things that set aside any successful project application to GDOT, um, in particular. Um, one is that you really do have a lot of the information that we've been developing here, a very well thought out, very well articulated project review. Um, and anything and everything that could possibly play into that need, whether it's congestion, whether it's safety, whether the safety relates particularly when it's able to schools, whether you have high accident locations, whether you can talk about an environmental benefit that you're achieving as a part of implementing the project, um, whether there's economic development associated with the project. Any of those things that you can think of, I mean, you really have to go your full arsenal of anything and everything that's real, but that you can articulate about that project. Um, the other thing, and, and I think this is just as critical as any piece of technical information that you have there with it as well, is someone who owns the project and who's the project champion here. Um, and it can be, you know, your consulting team can be a part of that. But I will tell you that the people that get projects done, they're there, they're there, they're there, they're asking, they're asking. They're reminding you one more time that they really have this need and look at all the benefits that are going to occur. And you have to stay with it, and you have to be persistent. This is not a short process, it's not an easy process, but you stay there and you get it. I think that that's another thing. The, the last thing that I think is critical is if you do have some resource commitment to make to the project, whether it's, um, you know, matching more than is required or whether it's an in-kind donation, say it's a right-of-way donation that can be made. Anything that, where you're able to demonstrate that resource commitment as well. Those, to me, are the three things that I think is maybe good.
I think there's four, and that is that the improvements have to benefit more than just the city, the city of Milton, my case. If it's just for your residents, then they must say, well, you know, you're going to have to take care of that. If you're looking at accommodating some, some traffic lack on Larnell or, or State Route Nine, you have to get, of course, there's state routes, too, that certainly helps. Uh, you have to get more, uh, chance of funding, you need to add some benefits beyond your own city, uh, to a, to a state government.
And I, 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 and I'll say it one more time, the whole idea of somebody owning the project, that is just critical. Think how many projects in this region are competing for funding at the state level every day. A lot. And I think you just have to be a passionate advocate for your project and stay down there and fight and stand. Maybe you're a little bit past, but it's, it's hard to get enough.
Karen?
Yeah, we have heard that there is now federal funding for roundabouts. Can you expand a little about this new program? Timeline, what's required of it, how it is the same or different from others?
Uh, well, it's different, first of all, because it's 100% federal aid. And that gets everybody's attention. Um, you do still have to, um, have a roundabout study to go along with the project, to be able to demonstrate that the roundabout will really work and that you're meeting the need and all that kind of thing. Um, and in terms of the limiti, the timeframe for the project, um, it's actually programmed in. I think I sent, uh, Carter and Senator, the, um, the site within the federal aid's project funding. And as long as we have the transportation bill with money in it, and they keep doing the, we're gonna, reauthorizations, that is a, it's not like a quote, "special program" per se. It's just a funding category that they have authorized in there. And, and we've had, we've had categories like that in the past. For example, there've been certain kinds of safety improvements that have been programmed at 100% participation. It still are. So, um, it's not so much a program that's going to lap someone out.
So, would we be better off choosing two and three intersections that we felt like were the strongest? Four roundabouts and really pursuing those heavily with the federal? Would that be?
Yes.
Our best bet?
Yes.
And find somebody that's willing to be the champion for those?
Yes.
We'd better off doing that than having five, six, or eight of them.
And, and how quickly can you, I mean, it's a decision-making process, because it's not like it is with a lot of them where, you know, there's a set amount of funds and they're gonna review all the applications and then make a decision on all those on a particular day. This is, as I understand, it's an ongoing thing, so.
It's through the regular process, so you have to get the project programmed in the, uh, ARCs, TIPs, it has to be in the steel. You have to still do NEPA, still, um, what you talked about earlier. Uh, some of those roundabouts, and it really just depends on the circumstances of the project. This is not exclusive to the roundabouts, but you could possibly, if it's a, if it has a very limited environmental impact, you can look at programmatic, um, environmental documentation, programmatic CE's that can help, um, expedite that, um, NEPA process somewhat. Um, but you're probably still talking about from the time that you prioritize them here and we get them into the regional planning process, to the time they come out the other end, you're probably still talking about it. Three years, four years.
The sooner you get started.
But the sooner you get started, the better. And, and I think that that's one of the things, if you can narrow it down to a couple, one of the things that we could want to do on the implementation strategies is knowing that that funding source, that unique funding source, in terms of it being 100% federal aid, is out there. Um, we ought to go ahead and, and craft a much more detailed strategy for those couple of projects for you as a part of this plan, so that you literally have got your checklist there. Here's what I think we do next, 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 and keep going.
Because I think there were one or two that have already, based on the full county plan, been preliminary signed for roundabouts. Would that expedite it, or is it?
It was, um, noted in our intersection, but there is one intersection with conceptual, kind of conceptual roundabout.
Providence and either Fremontville, I'm guessing, one of the two?
That's in him, Providence.
And that helps put it a little bit further, that they still gotta do design of the project, so.
And, and the other one that was, um, had started to be designed was Birmingham and Providence. I mean, it, it was a roundabout as well. Um, GDOT had a roundabout.
That's the one that she was talking about earlier, that we didn't recommend, that she wanted to make sure.
I mean, there was a design, there was a, a design created, and at one point, they were at Fulton County, and Angela Parker was recommending the roundabout. At that point, GDOT was not as, um, a pro, as not as much of a proponent, um, as they are now, which is just fabulous, because at least I've been preaching it for many, many years. And so now that GDOT is helping not only to support them, but to fund them, is just huge. So, that's why I was asking that question earlier about Birmingham and Providence. It would be very valuable, I think, for you guys to have that earlier design, um, because it would seem to me that it speaks to Joel's point about some lower hanging fruit, because it's something that had been identified years ago, there were designs done years ago. Um, the environmental issues perhaps are not as great, because again, there had been some studies done. Um, and because there's already been funding that's been allocated, it just seems, and it's a state road. It just, there's a lot of positives.
One of the things you probably have to look at on that, to your, I think, to your point, was I think that's one of the ones that's got some pretty significant psychistics issues.
It, it does, it absolutely does.
And what would need to be done to correct that?
Right.
Could be pretty costly.
Right.
You know what I mean?
I know.
So those are the kinds of things that can throw something into a knot, so and then.
It's never easy.
Just break down.
Now, does 100% funding include purchase of right-of-way? Because obviously roundabouts do take up more land than a normal intersection. So does that include, because I know a lot of the GDOT stuff does not include actual purchase of land.
I'm trying to remember now if on that, if it was just 100% for construction or if it was 100% for everything.
I'm not sure if it does or not.
Yeah. I'll have to go back and look at that, and I'll send you an email about it tomorrow, because I'm trying to remember if it was just 100% construction or if it was 100% PE right-of-way.
A lot of them are 100% construction.
Yeah, and I think that that's right, but I want to make sure we've got it.
More questions, Al?
Fay, I have, um, about four questions. The first one has to do with the recommendations that will be coming forth. I know that you guys know, um, probably more than anyone, um, the areas of the city that are, are problematic and, and what could be done, um, to fix those areas. And you probably know more than anyone, uh, what the cost would be to fix those areas. Is it going to be as plainly put as that, as these are the top recommendations that we think Milton should do, and these are the projected costs? Is it going to be as plainly put as that, as these are the top recommendations that we think Milton should do and these are the projected costs of making those changes so that we can have something to look at?
We're going to make recommendations as to, um, project prioritization and we're going to give you conceptual cost estimates.
And, and I assume you also know better than anyone, um, funding avenues, whether it be needing to come from here, whether it come from A R C or, or some other D, GDOT or something like that. Will you also include that in your recommendations?
We are, and that's what I was saying earlier, one of the things we're going to do though is make sure that we're, and we're going to tell you why, we're going to be sure we're matching, um, funding strategies to projects in a way that's advantageous. In other words, don't pursue a project that's got every kind of known environmental consequence on it with federal aid. It's going to be really costly and take a really long time, and at the end of the day, you might not even get to build it, even after you've done all that. So package things in a way, pursue things in a way that's smart, and that's one of the things that we're going to be doing is matching funding to project types to try to help leverage, um, getting those projects to implementation.
Very good, and the rest of my questions have to do with the, um, the survey that's in the back on, hey, well, it doesn't have a page, it's the, um, survey that was done, the telephone survey?
Yes, sir.
And I know that the city has also had city sanctioned surveys that we've sent out, um, recently, especially with regard to downtown and where that downtown might be. And I'm eagerly anticipating the results of that survey so that we can get started with that. One of the questions here has to do with residents having a favorable idea of developing a downtown area at Crab Apple Crossing with a seventy-eight percent supporting the proposal and fifty-two strongly supporting it. And, um, it's a scientific telephone survey, margin of error plus or minus of five point five percent, and it was two hundred residents that were surveyed. In keeping with the theme of supporting our own city sanctioned surveys and, and not knowing what those results are, although I've heard what some of those resort, um, results may be, I need a couple of questions answered. One of them will be how, um, when this question was asked to residents, what was the, was the downtown area defined as what that, what downtown meant? Or was it an area, a destination area, was it city hall, was it, because there's a lot of things, downtown means a lot of things to different people.
Right, and I don't have, I don't have it in front of me right now, but I can get the actual question for you and send it to you. My, if I remember correctly, what it, what it described, and again, I think, um, which is what I had said earlier, um, because I realize there's a number of different places that are being looked at for the, I quote downtown Milton. Is that look at that as indicative more of an activity center versus true downtown, although we did ask and look at, um, if other city, and I believe the question was phrased that if other city services were located there, for example, the city hall and other court and all those kinds of things.
Okay.
Because one of the things that during the Crab Apple, one of the Crab Apple Charette, I think it was during the Crab Apple Charette, um, when we had some conversation about that, a couple of, um, the participants indicated a concern about, well, that Crab Apple, if there were a city hall there, for example, that Crab Apple just couldn't handle the additional traffic associated with that. And so one of the things we did, um, just to help sort of describe that, was when we were, um, out doing the observations and counts at the schools, um, and some other observations and counts in the Crab Apple area, is we also looked at, um, that Alpharetta Municipal Building, or the, the building that circuses Court, I think that's held there, and we took some counts associated with that to see how much traffic does that generate or two? Because it's not in a peak period timeframe typically, and, um, we looked at that and determined that, um, that kind of activity really didn't impose a huge additional traffic burden in that area. But, I mean, that's really, if, again, that's just for your information, that's not to advocate any one particular thing, but it's to help you in your decision-making process about, you know, where should it now be? Is it more in the sort of the state route non-commercial court or is it in a Crab Apple, or is, and where do you, you know, are there other places that that might be suitable appropriate as well? But I know those are the two kind of areas that have really been part of the conversation to that to this point.
Thank you. And I guess this question would be for Chris, in light of that, uh, survey that was sent out to citizens. If, if there are statistics that come back that are at odds with these statistics, what are we going to use?
That's a good question. We didn't, uh, ask the question in our survey, where would you like a city hall to be and list out options? The question we asked in our survey was simply whether or not a city hall or a town gathering area was important to our citizens. So I don't know that there's necessarily going to be a conflict between the two surveys. Obviously, I'm comfortable with our survey and the fact that it was a valid survey. We had, at this point, just have a preliminary draft in with results, it'll be for presentation, hopefully at the November works, workshop. But I don't know that we're going to have comparable questions to say, oh, we've got a conflict.
So just so I'm clear then.
Well, you do though have the survey, you may be remembering the first survey that we did, so it barely represented with an intent of that Highway nine would be the favorable choice.
So we do have a statistically valid survey that asks citizens where, where a city hall and/or downtown, I mean, because again, downtown means different things to different people. Do we have a statistically valid survey that says that we've asked citizens where that should be?
I, I have not done one of those, no. The one that we did, that the city did, um, with the National Citizen Survey, that we just got the results back on, asked, uh, four free-form questions that we could specify what they were. And our question was simply on a scale of very important to not important at all, how important is it for you to have a city hall, town center type environment? That was a central gathering place for, I, I'd have to read you the exact question, but it didn't say, would you like a city hall in Crab Apple? Would you like a city hall on Birmingham? Would you like a city hall on Highway nine? It simply just asked the question, is, is that type of an environment important to you? And more than fifty percent, I don't want to give you the exact number, because as soon as I bring it in, you'll figure out I guessed wrong. But there was a, a large portion of the population that felt that that was important, it was in the seventy percent that thought that a city hall type facility was important, but there was no indication as to where the preference was for it to be.
And Alan, the reason we asked that question up here was because we were studying Crab Apple Crossroads and looking at what all that area could be as a part of looking at the intersection. We had to look at the land use and, you know, development, all those kinds of things with regard to the transportation infrastructure, and that's why it was asked on here, was in relation to this more detailed Crab Apple study that we discussed.
And I'm certainly open to wherever, you know, the, the downtown, including city hall and other places needs to be. Taking into account the wishes of our citizens and also, uh, traffic issues and other things that might be brought with that. I just, um, I know that I had received some correspondence from Mr. Ragsdale that, um, the C-PAC was not going to be providing us a recommendation as to where downtown needed to be. I'm unsure at this point, because I've heard there's some different surveys and I, I understand there is a survey that mentioned that.
Well, I think, I mean, C-PAC was the one that solicited the original survey, was an independent survey, the first year that we were a city. A statistic, a statistically sound survey that asked those same similar questions to what they surveyed it, so, you know, I'm not questioning.
They didn't specify a location.
Right, right.
Okay, so we don't, we don't have a statistically valid, um, tool to assess the citizens' wishes with regard to that, except for evidently this.
Well, and I don't know that I would call, I don't know, that's not, the intention of this was not to advocate or to offer you the answers to where should the downtown be. The use of this was to say, we're looking at Crab Apple, so, and we're looking at a lot of different things with regard to Crab Apple and in terms of its transportation infrastructure. And you really can't look at the transportation needs in that Crab Apple Crossroads area without looking at what is the development, what is the redevelopment, what, you know, what all's happening there, what all's going on. And, um, so it was asked in order to try to eliminate that sort of conversation for you guys a bit more, give you another fact or another piece of information in your decision-making process, not to advocate.
Got you, all right, thank you, that's all I have.
Are there any questions?
Yeah, just for me, I, I think I heard you say, Fay, that basically, I mean, it's already an activity center, there's activity that occurs there, so from a transportation standpoint, you were evaluating, do people still anticipate that it's going to have activity? The answer is yes. So I don't interpret this, and based on what you said, as necessarily saying that this is where folks wanted it to be a quote-unquote downtown. But I think you clarified that it's a function of if you anticipate having activity in Crab Apple, and we do. And it seems like what you're looking at is for that activity that's currently there, and some of which is not yet on the ground, but it's been approved, how do you handle that transportation?
And I think it could be, I just think, I mean, that's, that's a policy decision that I think the city council has to make some work on.
I think what you're saying, that wasn't the goal of the question, it was more because you were studying Crab Apple.
Right, transportation.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, item number three was removed from the agenda, so the city clerk will please sound the next item.
Discussion on the assumption Jews to develop the comprehensive land use plan, Mr. George Ragsdale.
Did you guys get a sheet of paper that looks something like this, or is it just a, oh, Michelle's handing it out now, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Mr. Ragsdale, I like the length of your presentation, this is probably the shortest one I've ever seen. You must have a lot to say on each of the slides, right?
Absolutely. When we last engaged the council around the financial model, um, we, we talked a lot about assumptions and, and needing to get grounded in some assumptions that we felt it was important that all of you supported, so that we didn't spend a lot of time developing a financial model on a, on a faulty foundation. We're in a position where the model is, is at a point where we're ready to use it, but we want to really make sure that we are, have common ground in terms of the assumptions we want to make. Let me start by just saying that, you know, there is no right or wrong here, the model has the flexibility to change these at any point in time that, that council has the desire to do that. But in order to make this tool be effective for us in evaluating and recommending specifically where growth ought to occur as part of the, uh, the comprehensive plan, we've got to get grounded in some basic assumptions that are going to help us guide what that growth is going to look like. So let's start on the revenue side. These are, with one exception, and I'll point that out, these are assumptions that have been vetted through C-PAC that we believe are the right assumptions to, to build the model around. Again, with the understanding, they can always be changed, but in order to establish a solid foundation, we want to make sure we've got something that we can rely on. We, we want to start with, on the revenue side, with, uh, two thousand nine year-to-date being our baseline, and we'll annualize that. We want to start with the assumption that the revenue is going to be recorded on an accrued basis. We spent a fair amount of time talking about, what should we assume, is it going to be the collection rate for property taxes? I believe that the city's budget's based on about a ninety-five percent collection rate. The difference between ninety-five and a hundred is probably not material, but from a modeling standpoint, it's a lot easier to say, this is what the property tax revenue should be, and we're going to assume that it's all going to come in in the year, uh, the, the year of the model, shall we say. So that's a second assumption. The third assumption is one that I will put a disclaimer on, because we talked about it at length in, in one of our C-PAC meetings, um, actually our last meeting. And I volunteered to speak to Commissioner Riley about assumptions that are being made downtown. I've talked to Johns Creek about assumptions that are being made there to try and get some sense of continuity. I think that the best assumption to make going forward is just assume that the lost revenue is going to be flat. I personally think that's an optimistic assumption, uh, but based on the data that we've got, I'm not sure there's a better assumption that can be made. It could be zero, um, depending on what happens with House Bill fifty-six, it could be zero, um, it could be allocated completely differently. The rights to allocate it could be determined completely differently if there's a Milton County at some point in the future. There's an awful lot of moving parts here. But I think for the, from the standpoint of, of making an assumption for the model, the best thing that we could do is just assume that it's flat based on what it has been. I'd like to stop there and just ask any questions about this page before we move on. And again, I, with apologies to the other members of the committee, that last assumption is not something that we talked about except conceptually. We talked about what should the sales tax, or the sales revenue, um, portion of that look like, what should the population look like, what should the population of Fulton County look like? What should the sales revenue in Fulton County look like? I mean, there's all sorts of different moving pieces here, and that's why, you know, again, after talking to Commissioner Riley, we thought that was a good assumption. Okay?
Can I ask a quick question? Is that, if that's one that you haven't talked about with the committee, I'm assuming that when you guys get back together, you will be talking.
We'll talk about it tomorrow night.
Okay.
The second set, the second page of assumptions on the revenue side, Michelle, just before the meeting, shared with me that, um, we, we have, we want to vet this with Stacy to make sure that she supports these from a financial standpoint. Whether they're consistent with the budget or not's a different question. But Michelle shared with me right before the meeting, Stacy's view is that our projection for two thousand nine is too pessimistic, uh, that it ought to be something closer to, to one and a half percent, I think, um, lower. I personally believe that all, we haven't seen all of that go through the system yet. This is a, this is an escalation of property value assessments, and I think we haven't seen all of the downside of that go through the system at this point. Maybe, maybe I'm wrong, but, um, our belief is that it should be, you know, a significant downsize in two thousand nine, a little bit less in two thousand ten, flat for a couple of years, and then grow at three percent after that.
So you're saying this is actually negative ten percent?
That's correct.
Not a positive.
Negative ten, negative five, flat for two years, and then positive three after that. And again, Stacy's view of two thousand nine is that that's too conservative. And, and ultimately, we'll talk about it tomorrow night, but I think ultimately we'll defer to her, um, if, if there's a better number to use.
So she thinks it might be more?
No, she thinks it's less, she thinks it's less.
Less negative.
Okay. Okay.
My personal opinion is that we haven't seen all of that flow through the system at this point, but we'll see.
I guess that she's watching the meeting from her office and she's about to appear through that door.
On the expense side, we want to start with two thousand eight actual, because we've got one year of actual expenses under our belt. Our view is we would escalate that at three percent a year, just a flat escalation rate, and then what we would do is plug in discrete changes in staffing that are, example, uh, additional staffing that's built into the two thousand and ten budget, we would plug those in as discrete additions to the budget instead of, uh, trying to escalate it. Capital cost inflation rate, we said we would use four percent a year, again, subject to debate, but we've got to start somewhere. And then the other assumptions, which is, which are ones that we probably spent more time on when we were with you last. We're going to assume that parkland, we're going to target ten acres per thousand residents as the amount of parkland that we want to build into the plan going forward. We, we want to assume population growth is going to be two percent a year. That will put us at about forty-five-two, uh, in, at the end of the plan. Our intent is to distribute that population growth pro rata by character area first, and then within each character area by the, the respective residential zoning classifications that are in those character areas. So we're getting, for all practical purposes, an even distribution of that population growth as a starting point. Commercial growth, to the extent that we will test that on the model to see if we need commercial growth and to what extent we need it to make, to be able to make up budget shortfalls, will be added once the residential population is distributed. We're going to zero out the population, the residency at three per unit regardless of, of zoning classification. Obviously, the density's higher with, with, uh, some of the zoning classifications, so you're going to get more people per, per acre, but you're only going to have three people per unit. We feel it's more important that we lock in on, on a common number, a consistent number throughout. And the last one was really just a tweak in the model assumptions in terms of the value of, of the, um, different densities in, in the residential area. We want the value of the high-density residential property to be fixed at two-ten in the model, and the multifamily properties at one-fifty. And those are just changes from, from what you guys may have seen before. That's it. Not a lot of assumptions, but we need year agreement consensus, uh, that these are at least a starting point. Again, what we want to do is come back to you with a model that we can start to look at, what is, what is this going to mean for the city going forward? But we've got to lock in on the assumptions first, we don't want to go back and have to play with the assumptions. This model has so many different variables in it that the, the grounding in, in the base data is going to be very important to what we do and how we use it. Questions?
I've got a couple of questions.
Sure.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, go first.
Go ahead.
Did I hear you correctly when you said that even distribution among each character area for the growth?
Even distribution amongst each character area for those areas that have been zoned and not developed yet, yes.
Okay.
Which is, we're going to fill it up consistently across the board first. I think Fay made a comment before that I think at a, at a concept level is consistent with the plan, and that the focus of the plan is going to be to allow most of the development, the growth, and the density to occur in the southern part of the city, and try and maintain the northern part of the city as more rural. But there is, within the model, we've identified how much is still available to be built out that's already been zoned. I think ultimately what it comes down to is going to be a decision between, how do you want that growth to occur? And how much of that growth do you want to occur? 2% growth is below what's in the Focus Fulton Plan. It's not significantly below, but it's below. Based on one of those projections, instead of being 45.2, we could be as much as 81,000 if you look all the way out to the end of this plan year. We think that's unrealistic. There's going to be some trade-offs between allowing the growth to occur and having it occur in the way we want it to occur, because right now, if everything that's zoned AG1 was developed as AG1, we couldn't prevent that. The growth could be significantly higher than 2%, but we don't have any controls in place right now to be able to manage that growth. So we've either got to put tools in place to be able to manage the growth down to a 2% level, or we've got to figure out ways to accommodate that growth if we're going to let it kind of freefall, so to speak.
If we can talk about the 2% for a minute, I mean, I realize that you indicated it's a little bit less than Focus Fulton, but what's the basis for the 2% other than it's a little bit less than what had been predicted by Fulton County? I mean, or any, it's just a, it's just 2% progressively every year?
Julie, to be honest with you, I think the number of different projections that we've looked at, we felt they were all higher than what we thought was in keeping with the kind of an environment that we wanted to try and have up here.
Right.
That in order to accommodate significantly more than that, again, we're at about 30,000 now, so you're talking about 50% growth over the life of this plan. That's a pretty significant growth.
Oh, I agree. My question's not, should it be higher? My question is, is it too high at 2% consistently? Or there's some years, especially when you talk about the potential that we haven't yet seen the bottom of the current environment, you know, is it realistic that we're going to see a 2% growth every year? Or is it possible that we might see a couple of times when growth is a little bit more flat? Because you don't have as many people transferring. You don't have the opportunity for houses to be sold and for people to sell elsewhere to then in turn move in. So my question wasn't, should it be higher? My question was, are we sure that 2% consistently every year necessarily takes into account the inventory we already have that hasn't been...
Again, there's no right or wrong answer to that. I mean, if you look at the last five years, the growth's been higher than that. If you look at this year, the growth's been very low.
Right.
Who knows what it's going to be in the future? We've got to start somewhere, and it's just easier, I think, from a modeling standpoint, to assume that the growth is going to be relatively linear over time.
I guess my question...
You can always go back and adjust it.
Sure. I guess my question would just be, especially because we are currently in an environment that's relatively flat, if in those first year or two, if we wouldn't look at a flat rate rather than to assume 2%? Because again, to your point, as soon as we start making the assumption that that growth's going to kick in now, it forces the perspective that there's got to be more density to accommodate growth. And if the growth is overstated, we might then in turn be overstating some of the other things that fall out.
Well, don't jump to the conclusion that it means more density. I didn't say that. What I said is that it will require the, what's available and zoned to be built out. It doesn't mean it's going to be a different density than what it's already zoned. We don't know that yet.
Correct. So, but again, going back to those growth rates, my question would be whether or not 2% consistently is necessarily what we want to assume.
That's why I'm here. We want your guys' direction on that. We can do whatever you want. We don't want to hold it flat for a year or two years and start it at 2%. That's fine.
Well, I guess it would, from my perspective, it seems as though it would be consistent with what you mentioned on the revenue side, is that we were looking to use our actual revenues on an annualized basis. Is that if we know right now that our growth rate is not a 2% rate, that it would be consistent to have a growth rate that's also consistent?
I think you're going to get into a situation, though, where you've got three legs of the triangle that don't meet. If you're going to assume that you've got, you know, escalation in property values after the next, after next year, and you're going to have growth in the revenue, on the revenue side, excuse me, on the expense side, that's going to be constant, you're going to have to have growth somewhere in order to be able to offset that, whether it's, whether it's population growth or whether it's commercial growth to support that. There's going to have to be something that's going to be put into the plan to balance about it.
I think, you know, basically, you said you guys came up with this number actually going a little bit lower than the surrounding areas. And we've got to look at it's over 25 years, too. So we're going to have some ups and downs and whatnot, but the 25-year plan is going to change.
With what's currently zoned, I think we get saturation currently zoned.
Yeah, at about 35,000.
At about 35,000, which is about a 10-year at 2%.
Right.
Right. Sure. And again, my point is just that if we know we're in a flat environment right now, and if we're thinking that we're not going to see a lot of growth in the next two years, instead of having 2% this year and next year, I'm suggesting that we would consider an even less growth rate for the first year or two, and then that would in turn, it effectively pushes out the absorption rate instead of to 10 years to 12 years. And it means that instead of getting to 45, 200, you're slightly less than that. I just think that in our current environment, we're not seeing that growth, and it seems inconsistent to presume that we would. So it's my view, and I think that it would be consistent to at least have an option that would say the first couple of years don't have a growth rate of 2%.
Other questions?
I have, I have one question.
Karen?
We have heard that we're about to process the public works, that we really have a lot of potential, especially when it comes to growth and stuff like that.
Right.
Al, what kind of assumptions are you making as far as that goes? To get us up there, we need to be, the cost, obviously, 4% a year is not the actual cost. I assume that's just inflation type, it's not really to catch us up.
Right. We aren't making any assumptions with respect to the expense side of the budget unless they're discrete decisions that we want to say, okay, we're going to make a, we're going to, let's take roads for example. We know what it's going to cost on a per-mile basis from a budget standpoint. We can calculate that number. We can go in and tweak that and say, okay, if we want the maintenance cycle to be reduced by 10 years, we can increase the amount of money that we're going to say we're going to dedicate to that. But we'll do that as a discrete number and say, okay, in 2010, we're going to go in and we're going to change the public works budget by X, and that X represents the change in that philosophy of how we're going to maintain the roads. And then after that, that number will be escalated at the same rate as the rest of the expenses.
To get it to a point that we really are maintaining.
Right.
Whether the plan catches up.
Right.
And you got that information from public works as far as what we need?
Well, we've got it from staff. Don't ask me what the source is, because I don't know the answer to that. But we do have that, we have those numbers, yes.
No?
I said during the presentation also, and just wanted to reconfirm that your cost projections include incremental cost increases for resources or staff.
If there's something more that we need to build in, other than the blanket escalation rate, then we would need to do that as a separate item, yes. What we're talking about is building in increases in numbers of staff, not increases in staff salaries. You know, one of the things that we've, we've talked about, you know, we, if, one of the, one of the problems we're going to have with using the 2008 is to the extent that there are significant shifts in the way the expense side is managed going forward, which is the next presentation, right? We haven't built anything in to accommodate that, because we have no way of knowing what that is or will be.
It's all based on the current costs.
Correct.
And I guess that's...
Again, that can all be changed at whatever point in time you want it to be changed. But we've got to, we've got to have a grounding to say, you know, the frustration with this has been that, you know, every time you talk about tweaking one thing, you can never get to the point where you've got something that you can really say, okay, now here's, based on this set of assumptions, this is what we think we ought to do. You can always go back and change the assumptions later on, but until we have something nailed down that we can really create a model around, we just keep, you know, it's a little too fluid.
I think you really need to nail it down with the assumptions that you've made, and haven't gone through that presentation.
When we come back to you and you look at it and you say, that doesn't make sense, then by all means, we'll go back and change the assumptions. But I think we want to provide some optionality, so we can have a dialogue with you about, you know, what the results of the model are going to show us, so that we can talk about what the options are for fixing what the, or not, what the model may show us.
Julie?
Just a quick point about CH2M Hill, and the fact that we know already that we're going to be transitioning, obviously. Knowing that right now, based on what you said, George, is that the expense side includes the fully loaded lump sum, and we already know, I believe everybody sitting around these tables believes that we're going to transition. We're going to hear about that in a minute. Based on even the estimates of cost savings that we anticipate, wouldn't it make sense that these numbers, at least on the expense side, go ahead and reflect some of those cost savings in this first iteration? Because we already know that we do anticipate some savings. It just seems to me that it would be logical to go ahead and include some of those.
That probably makes sense. It's a lot harder to just reach out there and grab that number.
I realize that.
As to what that, to what that value of sense makes. But maybe George and I can talk about how we could potentially look at doing some of that to be realistic but conservative, I guess.
We could do it as a one-off. I mean, I, to be honest with you, my fear in doing that is that, you know, doing it at the bottom line probably has some credibility, because you guys have some sense of what savings you're expecting to get. But the budget on the expense side's constructed on a line item basis. So being able to go into there and say, well, it's going to have this much impact on public works, and this much impact on this, and this much impact on that, my guess is that you probably don't have that level of detail at this point, except as a conjecture.
And that's, that's correct, because what I've got to deal with is one large lump sum contract, and a portion of it's public works, and a portion of it's community development. But your guess is as good as mine as to which one, what each of those departments cost.
I guess my request would be, though, that we don't assume that we're going to continue to have the same expense level that's currently in there, because it'll start to impact these growth projections and the impact. So I, again, I just think that we would be...
But I think, I think, Julie, when we come back with a model that says, okay, here's, here's what this looks like based on these assumptions, it will be relatively easy to go in and just change the expense and ratchet it down by whatever that delta is. You're not going to see it on a line item, but you will be able to see it in terms of gross revenue versus gross expense to see whether the gap is bigger, smaller, or flips, whatever.
Okay. Alan, you have a question?
And my question was related to that, too, is the anticipated savings from switching to, you know, away from CH2M Hill, and how that would be plugged into this model. And I do understand, we don't want to go bare minimum conservative on what that might be. But at the same time, we're going to be asked to approve this comprehensive plan. And I assume that the model, it may affect the land use in the plan that's being presented to us. And we won't fully know what those savings are going to be until after we approve that plan. So I know you can say we can change the model later, but that's after we've already approved a comprehensive plan with certain land uses in it, which I'm, that's, that's the problem I'm having right now. The concern I have is that we might be approving a comprehensive plan that's based on assumptions that may be overinflated.
So again, I want to go back to my suggestion, my request, and I think I heard Chris say that, separate from tonight, that maybe you guys could get together and talk about what those were. But I, personally, I believe that we're absolutely overstating our expense side if we leave the current lump sum amount for CH2M Hill. And Alan, you said it very succinctly, that ultimately, this is going to be used to drive what our land use policy should be. And if we're going into it with this first round, knowing that we're overestimating our expenses, I believe that we're starting at a place we shouldn't begin. We've got more current information, I would hope that we would use that.
I'll just say this, as Chris said, when we have current information, you guys can work with the numbers and see what will come out, so.
Maybe a question for Chris, just from a timeline perspective? Where are we in terms of that timeline? In terms of when we think we would have some more current numbers so that it doesn't cause CPAC to be...
Can we wait till our next?
We need to get to the next agenda item, and we'll absolutely have that discussion, and I'll give George a call.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, George? Thank you very much. At this point, I apologize to the, those in the audience, but I'd like to ask for an executive session purposed to discuss potential litigation settlement and claims. So if I may have a motion and a second to adjourn into the executive conference room?
I'll put forward a motion to have an executive session to discuss possible litigation, possible claims, and Mayor, the third point.
Litigation.
And litigation.
Second.
All right. First, Councilmember Bailey, second, Matt. Councilmember Lott.
Hailers in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay. There comes our city clerk, will please sound the next item.
Mr. Mayor, as you mentioned earlier, the three has been removed, so we're moving to, excuse me, I'm on the wrong page, pardon me. We're on number five, discussion on City of Milton Transition Plan with CH2M Hill. Mr. City Manager?
Mayor and Council, let me wait until we get our presentation up. And Matt, you've got a handout that you want to give everybody. We'll get to that in a minute, but that was the one screen that was terribly difficult to see, so we thought we'd print check copies so you could see it a little bit closer. What we've got tonight to talk about is how the city has put together a transition plan to move from general government largely being contracted by a private company to that government, which is self-performing on some levels, or evaluating other opportunities for outsourcing that may make sense for the city. And we're doing that particularly in public works, and we'll get to that here in a minute. But to a, to a more traditional form of government. So we'll walk through the slideshow, and I'm going to figure out how this works. There we go. We've got just a general transition. That's going to be just a high-level overview of what you were just handed out, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it. But it gives a quick snapshot as to what departments transition at the beginning of what months. We've already started some of it, some of it is well in progress, and we'll move forward with some of the longer-term stuff here shortly. What I'm getting to here is the, is this handout that you actually have. This is kind of a more defined transition timeline that shows some of the process that goes along with each of the department transitions, what personnel we believe are required, what kind of equipment and resources and other capital expenses that might go along with certain parts of the transition. And I'll get to each of these departments independently as we work through the, through the slideshow. But just kind of keep this graph handy, because this is the one that gives you an idea. Just got the H1N1, I guess, over here.
I guess.
All righty then. But this will kind of give you an idea as to what departments phase out at what time, and which ones come onboard as cities, and which ones we're exploring with other different types of hybrids potentially. So let's keep trudging on through this, but just keep that graph handy, because it'll make sense as we work through some of the specific departments. I'm going to start with human resources, because it's one that we have transitioned at this point. I think you were aware that we took that over on October the 1st. We in fact did that tonight. I'll introduce you to our human resource director, who some of you met in the hallway. His name is Sam Traeger. Sam, there we go. Sam comes to us with a history in human resource direction. He was the human resource director in Hall County, Georgia, as well as a compensation and benefits professional. That manager in Athens-Clark County, and served Hall County even before Athens-Clark County, has a host of credentials. has a host of credentials, as well as a master's degree and bachelor's degree, both from Mercer University. I think I've learned a lot about Sam now. Did I get it all right? I got it all right. This is something that will be a good fit for Sam, and I'm glad that we have him onboard at this point. His credentials are wonderful, and he's great to have in City Hall on a day-to-day basis. So he is largely a driving force that's going to help us as we navigate through selecting employees for the City of Milton. Traeger, T-R-A-G-E-R. It's only six letters. I always wanted to put an extra, T-R-A-E for some reason. T-R-A-G-E-R. Got it right? Good. So he's here with us now on a full-time basis. One of the things that Sam is also evaluating first on his list, which he has done before and is very qualified to do, is to look at our pension issue that we may or may not have and to make a recommendation of what we might need to do. So look for that coming very, very soon. I know he's on day four today, so, you know, we've accomplished a lot in four days. He'll get some of that stuff straightened around for us and is certainly capable of doing that. So without spending a lot of time on HR, that's the one step that we've made at this point, how we believe at some point during the transition that we will likely need a second person in HR based on the staffing level of what the city will become. But at this point, we have Sam, and we also have, within the CH Toom Hill contract, we have a .5 of an employee in that contract. So we still have a 20-hour employee at our disposal for Sam to use if he needs to. Any questions about Human Resources? Okay. We'll move on to the next slide, which deals with Municipal Court. This is another fairly easy one, because this one has already transitioned. Jeanette has employed a deputy court clerk as well as a court administrative assistant. Both are already here, and saw them working in court today. It was moving efficiently and smoothly. That was good. You'll see that the reason that we don't have this one closed out yet as a total project completion is because there's still some technology needs that go along with the court. Technology's going to guide us through this whole thing. You'll see it kind of pick up at the very beginning as well as carry us all the way to the end. So as far as personnel and labor, the court has been transitioned to this point and is operating the way that we anticipated that it would. Parks and Rec. I want to talk to you a little bit about Parks and Rec. This is a position that we've advertised. This is a position that Sam has spent a lot of his first four days conducting resume. I don't know why I keep saying revenue. We've been talking revenue a lot around here. Doing resume screens to get us to where that list is manageable. We have had, I guess, 74 applicants for our Parks and Rec director position. On a short-term basis, what I'm looking at doing, and we're still in the process of getting this to completion, certainly you'll have an opportunity to weigh in on it and vote on it, is to, on a short-term, month-to-month contract, have Mr. Chambers, who has been with us for a period of time, come back and work directly for the city on a contract basis on a month-to-month that would be cancelable upon 14-day notice of either party. So truly a short-term, month-to-month, knows it's not long-term, not anticipated to be long-term. But we have a couple of key projects that he was really involved in, particularly with the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. And I'd like him, and I need his institutional knowledge, very honestly, not to have to worry about getting that to completion. So the cost works out fine, actually less than what we had budgeted for a staffed, full-time position. But hopefully, we can get to some kind of an agreement so we can at least bridge this gap that we have at this point and then place a more permanent person when we find that person after completing the hiring process. Questions about Parks and Rec?
Did I hear you say that we'll hear more about that in terms of what you're proposing?
Well, you will, because if I'm authorized to execute a contract with him on a short-term, on a short-term employment basis, you'll have to agree to it. So yes, that contract has been written, and it resides in Ken's office at this point. As soon as we get it back, I'll get it in front of you all for your consideration.
What timeframe are you anticipating?
Sooner than later.
I'm sorry. What timeframe for the consulting for Mr. Chambers are you anticipating? Do you see that being two months, three months?
Yeah, he and I talked, I'm sorry, I thought you were asking when he might potentially be here. No, I guess I'd have to defer to Sam, but I would think, we've put it here on a December 1 start date, December 1, so we're talking, you know, 60 days or less.
Right, okay.
Does that answer?
Yes, thank you.
Sorry, I grabbed the wrong question, I'm sorry. Okay. Communications. We'll go to this next one. Some of these are fairly simple, and we just picked them off right at the beginning, because some of the transition that we're dealing with, we're dealing with really pure labor transition, some we're dealing with more in-depth, and we'll get to that in a minute when we get to Public Works and Community Development, et cetera. But Communications is on a December 1 transition. We have in the contract that we have with CH Toom Hill right now, a full-time communications person in that contract, so it's not as though we are without service. But this one is slated for an advertisement here in just about a week or so, as well as then a resume. We'll do the whole hiring process, the whole selection process, and end up with a start date sometime around December 1. I want to bring your attention here, kind of in the middle, which I didn't, probably should have done at the beginning, to give you some kind of an idea as to why we're talking about actually hiring processes for all of these positions. I think that that's what the city has to do at this point. As nice as it would be, and as convenient as it would be, and it would really be a lot easier on me to walk around City Hall and anoint people as now Milton employees versus CH Toom Hill employees, I don't know that that's the safest thing for the city to do. And the reason I say that I don't know that it's the safest thing for the city to do is if I made an offer and even if it was accepted, even if we got to within days of that person transitioning, and if a different opportunity presented itself, and we certainly don't hold employees captive, we like to hold the good ones captive, but the law doesn't let us do that yet. Even though we aren't able to do that, if they were to change their mind two or three or four days ahead of when the transition were to occur, if we didn't do a hiring process, then we're not even positioned with the luxury of having a second person or a third person on the list that might be highly competitive, just not our number-one selection. If we actually go through and do a hiring process, then we have a list of qualified candidates for positions, and we're less likely to have a gap where we all of a sudden have one of those, well, darn, now what do we do? We've, you know, we've put all our eggs in one basket, and the basket's gone away. So that's why you're going to see hiring processes in all these positions. Any questions about Communications before I get back on track? We'll move now to the City Clerk's Office. City Clerk's Office has a transition as well of December 1. This is really largely labor-related again. We're dealing with a couple of folks. This is one that Jeanette, this is Jeanette's staff that would be a deputy city clerk and probably the receptionist position that's been vacant for some time at the entrance, where the mayor and council's kind of entrances in the clerk's office, that desk has been vacant for some time. The hiring for the clerk's office will likely include those two positions. Again, we're dealing more with just labor staff than we are with anything else and making sure we pick the right folks. Special Events. Special Events is one that's under evaluation at this point. We will obviously do the right job description. Special Events is one of those positions in the city that has a multitude of different ways that it could function and function effectively. One would be to employ a special events coordinator. The second would be, this is a spot in the city that's ripe for outsourcing, if we wanted to go that route, and I'm still evaluating that, that there are people that work on a per-event basis, and that might be something that the city explores further. But this is one that has a January 1 transition, so right at the first of the year. Certainly, as we make decisions as to what that's going to look like long-term, we'll bring that back to you, as to what's the right decision for the City of Milton. Now we get a little bit more difficult. I got the easy stuff out of the way. Into the Finance Department. The Finance Department, a little stouter department, has more than just one or two people attached to it. Believe that the finance staffing is about right at this point, so I don't want to lead you to believe that we're all of a sudden going to increase the size of the staff or shrink it, for that matter. And I believe that we have the right types of people performing the finance function. So really, what you have here is a labor component as well as a technology component. This is one of the first places that we really get a technology component into the transition because of the software that we have that really runs the financials for the city. That software is HTE. It's a Sun Guard product that we have at this point. We'll either work through the process of negotiating a contract directly with HTE, if that's the direction that the Finance Department wants to go. And assume that from CH Toom Hill, we have the opportunity to assume a lease. That likely will make sense. I can't sit here and tell you today we're 100% committed to it, but it seems to make sense that we would transition what we have, and if there's a better opportunity at a later date, rather than trying to throw too much into the hopper and just see what comes out, we need to go ahead and make the transition occur. And then if we need to evaluate software options, that would be the time to do that. But Ms. Umflitz is well-prepared for those portions of this transition. Any questions on Finance? When we get to the end, I'll just give you a preview. When we get to the end, any of the people that have been involved from a staff perspective in our transition, John Umflit, Stacy, Matt, Sam Traeger, and probably some folks I've left out here, if you have any questions specifically of any one of them, that's why they're all here in the room, that they can answer things that are specific to their level of expertise. Let's talk the three biggest ones, really, in my estimation, to make this transition successful. The first of those is Community Development. It is the largest department that we have in the building minus the Police and Fire Department. It's a little bit bigger than Public Works today, largely because Public Works has such a big outsourced component to it. But as far as there actually being staff on the ground here in Milton that show up to Milton City Hall every day to work, the Community Development Department is the biggest of those. We have this in a staggered transition. We have a department director transition in this particular department. A month before, we have the rest of the department, largely because I'd like to place a community development director and have them assist in the placement of their staff. I think that's very important. So what we have here is a January 1 start date on a community development director and a February 1 transition of the remainder of the department. That just seems to meet our timeline. It meets us getting some of the lower-hanging fruit out of the way here at the very beginning to really spend the time doing some good recruitment for these department director positions. That's another thing that Sam comes with a lot of experience in, is in executive recruitment and actually going out and hiring somebody, not the person who's out looking for the job, who puts a resume in everywhere, but finding the right person that can serve Milton. And that's something that he's done extensively in his previous positions. So I want to make sure that we allow sufficient time, particularly for these higher-profile, more demanding department director positions, that we give enough time that we actually can place the right person. Any questions about Community Development? Okay. Public Works. We've started two of our departments in the transition. We've started them at the very beginning, and they will live the length of the transition as well as be the last thing to transition. Public Works is one of those, and IT is the other. That's partly because, from the Public Works perspective, we have to do a basic needs analysis of what we have, do an assessment of what we have, and then figure out a mechanism by which we can define a plan that's best for Milton. It is the one department in the city right now that is the most difficult, I guess, to figure out exactly how it's structured, just because there are people that report here to work, and then there's people that perform under subcontracts. I don't have the scope of work from the subcontracts, so I'm not exactly sure what those scope of works say. And really, we're working on kind of a work order basis at this point. But we have employed a consultant to navigate through this Public Works transition. The deliverables match our timeline. He's on track and is collecting data at this point. We will go to the market with RFPs and the appropriate, for the appropriate subcontractors, if we choose that that's the best direction for Milton. I believe, again, Public Works is a great department that has some good outsourced potential. And that it's not, even though we're doing a transition here, it's not that we're transitioning everything in-house. I think there's still some efficiencies in government that come from outsourcing, potentially just in a different model than we've been in. So Public Works is one of those areas that I think you will still see, and certainly I will wait and get our consultant's evaluation of it, but it's something that I think you will still see a more non-traditional approach, at least in a recommendation to how the Public Works Department is delivered. This one has an April 1 transition, so at the end of the transition. The other thing that goes the length of the transition is the IT component. Now, we've had this discussion before, and IT is something that takes a while, number one, to figure out what you've got. Number two, it takes a little bit of time to negotiate contracts with both, with software vendors, as well as to procure hardware, decide what leases we might assume, what leases we might not assume, and to put together a plan so that this city stays live as it relates to technology. You know, you want to walk, we all want to walk in here on April the 1st and have computers that work and phones that work, and I'm comfortable that we're going to have that. But there's a good bit of planning that goes along with an IT department. I guess I'm kind of selfish and kind of proud, but I think we've got probably the best IT director, and I know John won't take any credit for himself, but great guy and is absolutely capable of managing this transition. And if you have any questions for him when we finish, he'll kind of, he can give you a snapshot as to what he's done so far. So along with IT comes city website. We haven't forgotten about that. We haven't forgotten about GIS in the city. There's some of those things that just kind of work their way through with everything It, too, is one of those things that's going to take a good bit of time, the whole length of the transition, to get moved over, and I'm comfortable that we can do that. Do you have any questions about IT? Any questions of either me about what I've presented to you here, or what you might have in front of you, or of any of our staff members that have been very instrumental in putting together a transition plan and largely have already been working on it in many circumstances? John wants a question.
Oh, okay.
What level are you?
Okay, I'll ask one question. How about data security? Want to speak to data security in terms of at what point do we have the data that comes, say, from CH Toom Hill that's on their server? So if you want a question, I'll give you one.
There you go. Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Take it away, John.
Each system will transition over time individually. We may start with email, we may start with database, we may start with file storage. That transition plan has not been fully developed. We're working on that now. So as I get a system up to run in parallel with the system currently running that CH provides, then it will transition that data and take it over. Their system of that nature will stop, and ours will take over. So there really hasn't been deadlines set on those yet, but tests are coming.
And in terms of where we'll, I'm assuming that we're looking at different providers, either for a primary or secondary locale for that data, for data security and things of that nature?
We are. And it becomes less secure if we talk about where that is in a public meeting. But yes, we are.
But anyway, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. As always, Counsel, this is intended to be an open and transparent process. If you have any questions along the way, I'm not here to represent tonight either that this is going to be error-free and roadblock-free. What fun would work be if we knew how it was going to go every day for the next six months? But you've got a good staff working on it, and we'll bring you updates as those updates are able to be brought forward.
Thank you, Chris. No better. I want to thank Chris, because he's put forth a lot of effort, and like he said, it's not easy. Is there any other council discussion? Bill?
I'd like to add on next week's agenda, since this is the end of the seven-day notice period. I have two committee members who are vacating their positions on committees, and I might add, these are voluntary vacancies, and I'd like to get them on the agenda for next week. Second item is tomorrow, October 13th, I think a day we all need to take note of in respect. It's the 234th anniversary of the United States Navy. Thank you.
Okay, now I'm going to adjourn the meeting.
Meeting adjourned, 9:05.